Good morning and welcome. This calls to order the September 24th, 2019, meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Good morning. Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Peters? Frost?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
You have a call. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on the Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at SacMetroCable.TV. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, September 27th, at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. This meeting is also broadcast live on KUBU Radio on 96.5 FM. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board may fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff. When the chair calls your name, please come to the podium. Please take a moment to silence your electronic devices.
Thank you, and would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
For your consent matters, items 1 through 41. Item number 13, I have a request to continue to October 8th. Introduce ordinance amending Sacramento County Code, Chapter 6.99.265, Title VI, relating to limited service charitable feeding operations and adding food bank fee ordinance.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion of second, please vote.
Unanimous vote. Item number 20, you are introducing ordinance amending Title II, Chapter 2.90, Sections 2.90.400 through 2.90.440 of the Sacramento County Code relating to the home detention program and pretrial release supervision program. You are waiving full reading and continuing to October 8th, 2019, for adoption. Acting as your Sacramento County Water Agency, item number 36, I've received a request to continue to October 8th, is the approval of water supply assessment for California North State University Medical Center in the city of Elk Grove.
So moved, continue.
Sorry. We have a motion of second, please vote.
Unanimous vote. And this concludes the clerk's notes.
Okay, we will, we're gonna, I'm gonna have item 5 heard after we vote on the balance of the continuing, the consent calendar. Is there a motion or are there any comments or questions? Yes, Ms. Peters.
Let the clerk, let the show, have the record show that I'm recusing from item 27 due to potential conflict of interest.
Sure. Ms. Natoli.
Yeah, if I could just speak to item 23, please.
Item 23, authorization to execute the Second Amendment to the revenue agreement with Data Ticket, Inc., for parking citation processing services and software, thereby extending the term of the agreement on a month-to-month basis to June 30th, 2020.
Okay. My comment is, and thank you for the quick follow-up in my briefing yesterday, I asked the status of the legislation that was called out as being the basis for the uncertainty. Sounds like all those bills, excuse me, are not moving forward this year. I certainly support the extension, but I think that was used as the reason for doing this bridge over, and now that that legislation, doesn't mean it may not be resurrected next year, but it relates to parking penalties and renewal registrations and so forth. So, says, the staff report, which I assume was written before the legislature adjourned for this session, said the unknown impacts of this pending assembly, of these pending assembly bills creates an environment of uncertainty. I think that uncertainty now certainly goes away for this year, so I don't know how that affects the actual staff report that was presented to us today, and certainly may not affect the recommendation to extend to next year. But there is a process, we're actually going out for a new RFP, if I understand it correctly. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
So, will there be any amendment to the, or some adjustment of the process? Because now that legislation, there is certainty around this legislation and the actual processing of those parking citations, so.
We'll continue to process the citations, and we will monitor the legislature again next year if there's new bills that come in, and what kind of impact that will have on this.
Okay, I guess my question is, Mr. Gill, is the timeliness then of going out for a new agreement? Because this talks about amending this current agreement to allow for a month-to-month, that's what we're gonna be doing up until June of next year. It was seeming to me that there's no reason to delay going forward with the process that apparently has been least embarked upon, that would, you know, bring a new full-term contract to this board, so.
That is my understanding, that we're not gonna delay it.
Okay, alright.
If there's something that comes up through the legislation that starts making changes, that's something we'll deal when that happens.
Because you're always gonna have uncertainty, just, you know, that's the world we live in, and as it relates to legislation, and I think it was a valid point here, but that point no longer is the point of reason for actually continuing for any indefinite period of time, so.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Any others? Okay, do we have a motion?
Move second calendar.
Okay, second, so we'll move other, all but five.
Except for five, yes.
Yes. Please vote.
Unanimous vote. Let the record reflect that Supervisor Peters is recusing from item number 27. Item number 5, acting as your Board of Supervisors and Sacramento County Water Agency, approval of recommended fiscal year 2019/20 adopted budget resolutions, approval of fiscal year 2019/20 appropriation limits, authorization for the county executive to execute agreements with law enforcement chaplaincy Sacramento Wildlife Care Association.
Okay, I pulled this item just because we have a number of speaker slips, so we'll go right into public comment if that's okay with the board. Okay. And Nikki will be followed by Courtney Hansen.
There's a word in the global economy for this kind of budget, and the budgets that we've been promised in the coming years. It's called austerity. It's a stripping down of public services and safety nets, and forcing people to live with the consequences of those decisions. We see over time, and we've learned, that poverty is a policy choice, that they're in a very, very rich country, in an economy that for some has been flourishing, and for others has been devastating. What we really see, instead of kind of a re-infusion of that capital into human capacity to live better, we see that capital stockpiled, and we see income inequality kind of take hold, and then we call it economic revitalization. And that's super problematic, because it leaves so many of us out. And so when we talk about the stripping down of public services, and the kinds of things that our communities need, the libraries, mental health services, goodness, we are 100 to 200 inpatient beds short here in our county services. Why aren't we funding that? Why are we expanding the jail? Why is there a new tower going in across the street? It's truly an abomination, and so what we see when we see austerity policies, because they're not new, so they've been filtering out throughout the nations of the world, and what we see is that people suffer. People suffer in mass quantities, and then what public municipalities do to handle that suffering is to engage in widespread criminalization of the poor, to engage in public control of the unrest that begins to happen when people begin to not have what they need. And maybe this starts small, especially in a cushioned community like our own, but it's, we're not cushioned. There are thousands of people in Sacramento who sleep no cushion on the ground every night, and so we're not, we're not waiting for a rainy day, the rainy day is here, and we need a budget that reflects our values, not a budget that is here for long-term incarceration and criminalization of the people that we love. Thank you.
Thank you, Nikki. Courtney Hansen? Courtney will be followed by Mackenzie Wilson.
Good morning, nice to see you all again. So my name's Courtney. I've grown up here in Sacramento, and as you probably know, we're here because we're deeply concerned about this budget, and I'm just wanna let you know that this group actually literally formed because some of us were losing sleep after seeing the Sacramento Bee headline that every single department would be facing cuts with no end in sight, other than corrections in the sheriff's budget, which there seems to be endless amounts of money for. And budgets aren't just about money, they're about morals. So this budget really lays out what your priorities are. At this point, I hope they could at least be, you could at least stand by them and admit that these are decisions, they are not inevitable things unfolding, they're decisions. And so for folks who need more context, we're here because there's currently an $89 million expansion plan of our RCCC jail in Elk Grove. On top of that is a separate incident, there was recently a horrific class action lawsuit on the main jail conditions, because things were happening like keeping people in solitary confinement for eight years pre-trial, before they'd been convicted of anything, which 60 to 75 percent of the people sitting in this facility have not been convicted of anything. And then that class action lawsuit recommends one thing very, very strongly, which we're not talking enough about, which is reducing the jail population. The class action lawsuit recommends that you reduce the jail population, which is possible, and we're really interested to learn that meeting some of the other requirements of a lawsuit, like ADA accessibility, might cause a loss of 30% capacity to hold people in the jail. We see that as a serious opportunity to decrease the jail population by 30%, to do what the class action lawsuit recommends, to meet people's basic human rights and constitutional rights while they're in there and move toward decarceration. So, you can fund a future that gives kids seats in classrooms, or you can fund a future that gives them space in a cell. You can't do both. One prohibits the other.
Can you wrap up, Courtney?
So what do you want your legacy to be? That's what we're here to truly ask you to think about. We're losing sleep over this. Are you losing any sleep over this?
Thank you. Courtney.
This is one of your last chances to stop the further incarceration of our neighbors, as it pertains to the new dark tower that you're trying to build, in addition to the sponge across the street. Eight million dollars could be and should be better spent. I don't know how to drive home for you the fact that Sacramento doesn't want it. As an organizer, it's my job to have conversations with our neighbors, and as a person who also wants to dismantle white supremacy and sexist racist institutions, it's my job to prioritize and listen to impacted voices. It's something that I feel you guys are not doing, that none of these policies that I'm seeing you guys pass are working towards a cooperative society that is one that's gonna benefit all of us. Our county is cutting services and expanding jails. I know that, what I know is that a path to incarceration is that incarceration is not a path towards changing these institutions, these racist, white supremacist sexist institutions. These institutions are in fact founded in racism, sexism, and all of that. So what I, unfortunate, it's just, it's unfortunate that we're having this conversation today, because we know these things. We can't argue them anymore. These very things were founded by these things. We cannot Band-Aid it away. It's not something that we can just decide, hey, we're gonna take the racism out of this. Doesn't work, we have to dismantle it. What I also know is that if things are not accessible, then it is neither radical nor revolutionary. Yet for some reason, what I'm seeing is you guys taking access to programs away from people who need them the most. So what does that say about this city, this county, that we are not working towards a path of liberation? Sacramento does not want an $89 million expansion. We do not want $8 million spent on a dark tower. If my friends will go ahead and raise their signs up. We spoke to a lot of people in this community for the last couple months, and these were the things that were in common amongst all of these folks. This is what Sacramento wants, and I hope that you guys will align your policies to match that.
Thank you, Mackenzie. Melinda McCracken. And Melinda will be followed by Lynn Berkeley Baskin. Is Melinda here? Oh, sorry. Morning.
Today I'd like to talk about the court's findings in the lawsuit that led to your decision to expand the jails. That's not what they recommended, is it? They recommended, actually, that you reduce the jail population. I haven't heard any of you yet explain your choice to just disregard the court's findings. I wonder if you have anything, any public statement, anything written? Because you must have discussed the possibility of doing what they said. I mean, I would think. You must have, couldn't, did you talk about what you could do to get mentally ill inmates out?
Yeah.
Did you possibly discuss? That you could, instead of expanding the jail, expand inpatient hospitalization facilities? That seems like a perfect way to cut the population by about half, and you don't even have to do a study, because I know you don't like to do studies, but Contra Costa County has already done it. They've already started, they even have a blueprint, follow theirs. They've reduced their jail population to one-third of ours. Another way you could cut it is, instead of spending $100 million on jails, spend some of that on increasing the permanent housing and services for homeless people. How about that? And then just stop putting them in jail. Then you don't need to expand. Spend that $100 million doing some public good, instead of making the sheriff happy. Because all you're doing is destabilizing our communities by continuing to incarcerate people. I talked to you about this before. Our families are being ripped apart, our communities are unsafe, because desperate people do desperate things, and the desperation is caused by being in jail and then having no job to go back to. Your family's been taken away from you, your children are in social services now.
Melinda, can you wrap up, please? Thank you.
So, what I'm saying is, rethink this. Have a heart, think about what you're doing, have some concern for the benefit of the public good.
Thank you, Melinda. Lynn Berkeley Baskin, please. Followed by Ava Nadal.
Supervisors, thank you for considering our testimony today. I serve on many boards and committees, and am very involved with community and public health as an advocate. My hope is that you are all intellectual enough and humble enough to truly hear the evidence and public outcry before you. For decades, physicians took an approach to pain that seemed the easier and less costly on the surface, but experts predicted the outcome, and the powers that ignored the evidence. Now we have an opioid epidemic costing taxpayers billions of dollars. It was preventable. I'm paraphrasing from the Pew Research Report about collateral damage of incarceration. The price of incarceration and budgets represents just a fraction of the overall cost of incarcerating such a large segment of our society. The collateral consequences are tremendous and far-reaching, and include substantial and lifelong damage. The Center for American Progress explains that the damage of incarceration on our communities lasts for at least two generations, and that half of our children are directly impacted by a parent who has been incarcerated. The research of Dr. Barcau of NYU, this is her book, I strongly recommend you use it, explains that using electeds to set budgets is problematic, because they vote with their emotional response based in tradition rather than in data. Supervisors, focusing the largest percentage of the budget on policing people and incarcerating them will continue to lead to more homelessness, more trauma in families, more public need for basic necessities, and increased crime. This budget is backwards. Increase the public defender's budget, increase services for people re-entering our community, increase services for their families and children. The outcome is foreseeable by those of us who know the data. At the very least, please delay this vote and do your homework. Have the courage to change the course of community health, public safety, and economics in our region. Have the courage, please. Thank you.
Ava Nadal, followed by Adam Jordan, I believe Adam Jordan, yes.
Good morning.
Morning.
Not happy to be here, I fell last night on my dog, so I'm in pain. I'm in pain every day, I'm disabled, but I'm able to do all things that Christ strengthens me, Mr. Kennedy, counsel. Sad to be here today, because I have a son that's 38 years old, he's a two-strike felon.
Can you pull the, can you pull the second mic down? Thank you.
He was piped mine in prison.
Speak in between, then we can hear you.
At 13 years old, he was charged with a strong armed robbery with a Harvey waiver for a crime he didn't commit, no. Mother was a security for Elk Grove School District, yes, I've sung at nine gang funerals, that's what I do. Death and dying and grieving mothers all throughout Sacramento, I know every mother who's had a child killed by gun violence. Three weeks ago, my son was arrested for kidnapping my granddaughter, who he has 70% custody of, he's a two-strike felon. The US Marshal SWAT team, yeah, they arrested my child. Thomas lost his job, but he's at work right now. I'm fighting a custody battle for a 13-year-old grandchild who's traumatized by your system. Pipeline of prisons, real. I'm part of the Village Advocates of Sacramento and Black Leadership Youth Program. You know, I'm also an ex-state rape of ACE, also Center for Pop Democracy National Director. It is a shame that you guys would rather spend $89 million to build and expand the jail, when we have homeless people. On May 1st, when that homeless camp was set down, Mackenzie was arrested, LB was arrested, that woman's arm was broken. That was not necessary, I had an interview that day. So when I came back out there, Mr. Kennedy, I was saddened, at the fact that my neighbors, because I lived down the street, I lost three homes in Elk Grove. My husband had brain surgery, too. So when I see the damage affected my family, because my son was locked up with a million-dollar bill in that 651 I Street. I was charged with lynching years ago. Who did I lynch? I was in a car accident, and I was thrown to the ground in a car accident, I had spinal stenosis, pharamyology, arthritis, carpal tunnel, tendonitis, atica in both my legs, but I had the courage to get up and come to tell you guys, you guys should be ashamed of yourself, because what's happened in this community in Sacramento, we're the state capital, California, how dare you guys want to build a jail? We have all these people out here laying on the grounds, coming to my neighborhood, terrorizing me. We got pimps. I saw five shirtless cars, watching little girls get pushed out of a car, yelling Stockton and 65th. I watch it every day. They're 13 and 14 sex slaves, sex crimes. Why are we the damn head of all that? But we want to build a jail, really? We got, the suicide rate between 5 and 11 years old doubled last year.
Can you wrap up, Ava?
Five years old to 11, can you imagine your child being on the ground tonight? Or getting out of a car to go to school hungry? I know a five-year-old that was spinning seven times, he was hungry, getting out of a car. You better do something. Our kids are getting suicide.
Thank you, Ava. Adam Jordan, followed by Connor.
I'm Adam Jordan, I'm part of Anti-Polic Terror Project. I'm here with the decarcerate Sacramento, and I want to get into the numbers instead of the emotion of the thing. It costs $82,000 a year to incarcerate somebody, so when you criminalize mental health, instead of helping mental health patients and increasing mental health capacity in the county, it only costs $25,000 to $30,000 a year to deal with a mental health patient. You would save $50,000 a year. I'm talking to the fiscal conservatives, I'm talking to the Republicans right now. $50,000 a year. So if you have 10,000 mental health calls in the county, at a 60% arrest rate, that's six, that's 6,000, 6,000 times $82,000 a year. Instead of building mental health capacity, increasing mental health beds, and giving the ability for people and patients to have mental, to be able to have healing, and I know this is a weird word for you in here, healing, right? Because, because increasing prisons is not healing. Sheriffs don't want to be mental health workers. When there's a 40-hour program, a CIT, Critical Intervention Training, that they only do eight hours of, that shows they don't want to be mental health workers. They don't want to be mental health prison guards. And if you save $50,000 a year, even the staunchest, staunchest fiscal conservative would go, well, maybe we should, you know, take some money and put it somewhere else, like education, you know? If you want to decrease prisons, have your, have the rate of graduation go up, and exponentially you will be able to, the crime will go down, because people have enough knowledge to do something besides be criminal. Because it's not, it's not an ethnic thing for crime, it's a poor thing. Poor people commit crimes because they're desperate. Mentally ill people commit crimes because they're desperate, they don't have help. And if you help the people instead of incarcerate people, all of a sudden you have a better place to live in for everyone, where you, where people like us don't have to come yell at people like you. And you won't even, look, if you actually did the job to represent all the people...
Can you wrap up, Adam?
Sure. I'll wrap up in like four seconds. I think you see where I'm getting at.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Adam. Connor, and after Connor will be Lamils Garrett.
So, so I'm Connor. I want to start with something that you've probably heard before, because I've heard this in a lot of meetings like this, from a lot of commentators, which is that budgets are a statement of values. And you've heard this from previous speakers, even today, that you should be prioritizing the needs of the people over what the sheriff wants and over things that directly harm the people. So you need to put funding into various services rather than in policing and incarceration. So furthermore, we know that when infrastructure is built, people often feel like it should be used. So if you increase infrastructure for policing and incarceration, there's a good chance that those things will be increased, because the police department feels like they should use them. Instead, we should be decreasing those things and working toward restructuring the system in a way that prioritizes people overall, rather than locking them up and harming them in various ways. So we should be reprioritizing where this funding goes, and in fact, not only should you not be expanding the jail, but you should be trying to reduce the amount of resources that go into the jail and into policing. So if the capacity is decreased by 30%, that is a good thing, because you should use that to put in place policies that drastically reduce the population in prison by increasing services and by abolishing bail and letting people out when they have not been convicted, and various other things that you could do very quickly and very directly in order to start moving us in a better direction.
Thank you. Lamils Garrett, followed by Parker Evans. Morning.
Morning. Who do you expect to occupy and expand in jail? Who? Think about faces, think about communities, think about families. It is without question, through research, that those who are lacking food, those who are lacking education, those who are lacking healthcare, and those who are actually lacking shelter are likely to be the very people that you will be putting into this facility. However, at a cost... For healthcare, healthcare, mental healthcare, the many people that you have in there, you're actually losing approximately $50,000 per person, per year, that's within your prison system that should be in a mental health facility. Those are dollars that you're actually wasting that you can be doing other things with. In terms of housing, there are so many solutions available, there's so much land available in Sacramento County. And frankly, let's look at your friend who are developers. Have developers build low-income housing. Give them resources to actually do that versus putting people in prisons. Give them the opportunity to use lands that are above railroad tracks to actually build upward and allow low-income housing for people to live there, and for you to build retail projects, multi, projects that are actually serving retail, business, industrial, as well as housing. There are so many opportunities available versus hurting the public more by actually putting people in jail. There is no good thing that comes out of most situations of incarcerating a human being. Nothing in our system. What we do is we create systems that will actually repeat that, that will bring it back over and over again. What do you think happens to the children of the incarcerated? They are very likely to be incarcerated. They are very likely to be outside of the education system. This is, as has been said before, a decision of where your values are, and you get to speak to that. Desperate people do desperate things. You have options to help them not do those things. Thank you.
Thank you. Parker Evans? Parker Evans?
Item 44.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're correct. Finally then is Hassan.
It is impossible to sit up there and be ignorant about the conditions taking place in your own jail. It is impossible to sit up there and be unaware of the research, the data, and the testimonies of people harmed by the prison system. It's impossible to sit up there and not know that prisons increase crime and cause more harm in our communities, and resources and public services are better ways to reduce this harm. The way I see it, there are only two ways that you can sit up there and be okay with this jail expansion. At best, it's ignorance, but we know you're not ignorant, so let's call it willful ignorance. At worst, it's malice. Malice towards the poor, malice towards the mentally ill, malice towards the homeless, and malice towards all the disadvantaged communities that you're responsible for looking after. This is how we are looking at you today. We know you're not ignorant. We know you know what's going on, and we know that you know the right thing to do is to not go forward with this jail expansion. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that is the last card I have for public comment. I do have some members of the board who have punched in. Supervisor Nattoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The actual discussion about the project itself, the additional facilities and expansion has been termed here for RCCC is actually coming to us October 24th, is that correct?
That is correct.
And I guess, Mr. Gill, I guess I would just offer that as a part of that, obviously we've heard from folks here today and certainly in hearings over the past several months, and that will be a decision point to the point made by one of the speakers earlier, relative to that project is coming to us in a general services context. But I guess what I would offer, and I think would be helpful, is to maybe broaden the discussion beyond just that agenda item, at least in the sense that the commentary that we've heard today from folks that obviously, you know, speaks on behalf of a number of people in our community, is to, you know, as we're looking at that particular project and the 25 beds and some of the other facility improvements or additions that are included as part of that, to have some understanding, at least in the context of the presentation, about what it means relative to the ongoing staffing. We've had discussions in these chambers over the past several years regarding ongoing costs for staffing that facility. And I think to the point about the consent decree, that RCCC was not tied to the consent decree. And so what it means relative to what else is being anticipated with either the downtown facility and/or at RCCC. And so I guess I would just ask that, you know, we've heard about, you know, mental health issues, health issues more broadly in the community, but certainly as it relates to folks who either are pretrial or have been sentenced to now what is county jail-prison. And I guess, without getting too far beyond the scope of what will be before us on 24th of October, I think it would be helpful to have some of that in the context so we get some understanding that, one, if we choose not to proceed with that project, but also then, you know, what it would either free up in future budgets and/or allow for service delivery in a different context, either the main jail, but also at RCCC. So if we could have some of that as background nav, I think it would be helpful, particularly in light of the, I think, the community response we're receiving on that particular item.
Will do.
Okay, thank you very much.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So to dovetail a bit off of Supervisor Nattoli's comments, I'd like to suggest that, because again, there have been a number of comments issued here and concerns expressed here and during our final budget deliberations about the county's intent or not to explore how best to reduce jail population. And I'd like to suggest, either as part of the discussion on the 24th, perhaps as a separate standalone informational item for the public in these chambers, that we have a presentation on what, on kind of the totality, the comprehensive effort that the county is pursuing to reduce jail population, because I think there is some confusion, quite frankly, out there about what it is that we're trying to do in light of Prop 10 and other things, some of the initiatives that the courts are pursuing. And I just want to make sure that we have an opportunity to have kind of a holistic discussion about that. Again, it's mostly for the benefit of those that have expressed the concern about that part of the equation. I think it would be helpful if we did something like that.
Absolutely.
Okay. And then, secondly, this is a procedural matter. I need to make sure that, because we do have an item before us, item five here, that my disposition on this matter is consistent with my disposition as it was expressed on final budget, that I'm not supporting the sheriff's budget. I issued a protest, protest, no vote then. So I'd like the record to reflect that that should be consistent with the action being taken with regard to item five.
Okay, any other board members?
I will just say, Mr. Gill, first of all, I agree with Supervisor Serna, and I think that that should even be a separate line item in the agenda.
The second, correct.
Right. So I thank you very much, Supervisor Serna. The one thing that I will say, and I'll ask, Mr. Gill and I have had this conversation before, and as the chaplaincy is on the agenda here and we are providing funding for it, that the message be sent that, first of all, the work that the chaplaincy does is incredibly important and valuable and helpful. There was a multiple homicide in the district I represent, and the way that they took care of the bereavement process was really, really invaluable to the community. That being said, there have been a number of very politicized comments to come out of the chaplaincy, and I would like the county executive to send the message that it's not a political organization, and it's certainly not a partisan organization, and that they should be very careful about the statements they make in public that are over-politicized.
Got it. Understood.
Thank you.
Good comments.
Okay, with that, is there a motion on item number five?
One.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote, and let the record reflect Supervisor Serna's voting no on the sheriff's budget.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here, for your words, and also for your civility and decorum. It's much appreciated.
Item number 42, Presentation of Resolution Proclaiming October 2019 as Sacramento County Employee Giving Campaign Month.
Thank you, board. I just, I have very little to say because I'm going to actually hand the microphone off to someone who has more to say and probably more intelligent. But I do want to say, just on behalf of the board, to all of our employees, that you continue to impress, you continue to transcend any boundaries that there are in your generosity, your giving, and the commitment that you have to our community. And on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, to all of our employees, I want to thank you and express the board's appreciation. And with that, I'll turn it over to Chief Seal.
Thank you very much, Lee Seal, Chief Probation Officer, on behalf of our department, and really on behalf of the county today. Thank you for the opportunity to be here and to accept this resolution on behalf of the board. I want to thank each and every one of the board members who, by your own personal example, set a commitment to giving in our communities. You're out there, I know you're dipping into your own pockets, you're writing checks, you're out there on the weekends supporting causes, really giving with your own time and energy to things that you believe in and care deeply about. That sets a tremendous example for all of us in the county, from department leaders like myself, but all of the employees and throughout the citizenry of this county. October kicks off the employee giving campaign. We're excited. I have the pleasure of chairing it this year. We've got a great team. I want to acknowledge really all the departments who are working together to make this a successful event. It kicks off in just a few days, on October 1. We're excited about that. We've got a big goal of $400,000 that we're aiming towards this year. We want to put that into the pockets of deserving entities out there who really benefit from all the support. We, all of our events are sold out. We've got a golf tournament, we've got a 5K. I'm going to be out there. I will not miss the opportunity to throw down the challenge, whether it means playing golf on, I think, October 10th, or running a 5K on October 24th. I hope to see everyone out there. Again, thank you for this resolution, and we look forward to making this a successful event this year.
Thanks. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Chief, and I'm afraid that October 24th is not nearly enough time for me to get ready, so enjoy that 5K. Next item, please.
Acting as the Board of Supervisors and Housing Authority of the County of Sacramento, item number 43, Pacific Rim Apartments Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act Hearing, Approval of Tax-Exempt Bonds and Loan Commitment.
Good morning. I'm Susan Veezy, Program Manager in the Development Department at the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. The report before you requests approval of a mortgage revenue bond and a $2.4 million loan commitment of federal home investment partnerships program funds for the acquisition and rehabilitation of Pacific Rim Apartments. Pacific Rim is located at 6620 Sunny Slope Drive in Sacramento County. The property was built in 2005 and consists of 32 three-bedroom units. The project will be rehabilitated by Alliance Property Group, Inc., and the units will be regulated at 50 and 60% of area median income and will continue to be monitored and regulated by SHRA for 55 years. Improvements will include exterior and interior work such as new kitchens and baths, flooring and paint, new HVAC and landscaping. A new community room and laundry room will be constructed. The project will be managed by FPI Management Group. A minimum of seven hours per week of onsite resident services will be provided by All Things Are Possible. Resident services will include after-school education and enrichment programs. In closing, staff recommends approving the loan commitment and issuance of mortgage revenue bonds for the rehabilitation of Pacific Rim Apartments. And Danielle Bennett from Alliance Property Group is here, and staff, we are all available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Supervisor Nattoli.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Susan, just a couple of questions then about the improvements. Obviously, Complex, as you noted, was built not even 15 years ago.
Correct.
And, you know, we're doing a major rehab of it. Certainly, I know this is in Supervisor Kennedy's district, but I'm familiar with the project and certainly the area. I guess a couple of questions then. One, as it relates to the re-roofing of the property, and we talked about asphalt composition, roof shingles, but I think we've had previous discussions about the roofing materials because oftentimes we've seen over the years that water intrusion, either through faulty roofs and/or siding in some cases, has caused major damage in these multiplex complexes. And so what is the detail behind that? Are you getting a 25- or 40-year roof? You know, you can get composite shingles that will give you a 15-year life, and depending upon their exposure and so forth, you don't even get that out of them. So I guess I'm curious, because in the past, we've talked about using either, you know, lightweight tile or some other material that has a, certainly a certifiable life beyond what may be offered by manufacturers. And so I guess I'm curious about that.
Sure, and actually prepared to answer this question because I thought you might.
I guess you've been hit before, huh?
In our scope of work, which is a requirement that will be integrated into the loan agreement and is in part of the commitment, it will be a roof overlay with a cool roof shingle over the existing roof on both of the buildings, and they will have a minimum of 20-year warranty, and they are asphalt compositions shingles.
Okay, so it's not a tear-off. It's actually, it's...
Right, it's an overlay.
This is the first re-roof, and so, okay, so you're able to use it.
And it'll be a cool roof, so that should be valuable as well.
Okay. The services then are provided by All Things Are Possible. Is that the nonprofit that's going to provide the after-school programming?
Correct, yeah. And this property, it, when it was originally constructed, it had a single owner for two separate developments, and then over time, there was a change in ownership. And so Pacific Rim itself has not had any resident services, any location for resident services, because all of the community space was in the other building. And so the real big benefit, I think, to the residents of this project will be that new community room and laundry room, and so there will be space for the resident services.
So people don't have to go across the street?
Correct. It'll be integrated.
Because these properties were tied.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that makes sense. Because I know we put quite a bit of money into the property across the street. In fact, twice since I've been on this board have we put money into that particular property.
In addition, there were a couple, they will also be providing covered parking, which had been in the initial requirement for the original build and never got constructed. And so those will be constructed with this financing.
Okay. All right, thanks. So I, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? I have no cards on this. I will say that thank you very much, SHRA. I sincerely appreciate the work done here. It's going to be a great project, great addition to District 2, so thank you. With that, I will move staff recommendation. Please vote. Next item.
Item number 44, Approval of Updated Multifamily Lending and Mortgage Revenue Bond Policies.
Good morning again. I'm Susan Veezy.
Welcome back.
Thank you. So today, we are requesting your approval of our revised multifamily lending and mortgage revenue bond policies. These policies were last adopted in 2009, and given some changes in the affordable housing lending environment, including the loss of redevelopment and tightening of home program regulations, we believe it is time to approve an updated version. The purpose of these lending policies is to provide our development partners with a clear understanding of SHRA's underwriting standards. Such clarity is critical for developers who often invest thousands of dollars to put an affordable housing deal together before the sticks go into the ground. The policies also provide a roadmap for SHRA staff tasked with assessing project feasibility. Funding sources covered by these policies include CDBG funds committed to multifamily housing, home funds, local housing trust funds, and your local housing, affordable housing funds. We also employ these underwriting standards when working with the county on the No Place Like Home program. We're SHRA to administer the new state funding brought about by SB 2, known as the... lending and mortgage revenue bond policies. These policies were last adopted in 2009, and given some changes in the affordable housing lending environment, including the loss of redevelopment and tightening of home program regulations, we believe it is time to approve an updated version. The purpose of these lending policies is to provide our development partners with a clear understanding of SHRA's underwriting standards. Such clarity is critical for developers who often invest thousands of dollars to put an affordable housing deal together before the sticks go into the ground. The policies also provide a roadmap for SHRA staff tasked with assessing project feasibility. Funding sources covered by these policies include CDBG funds committed to multifamily housing, home funds, local housing trust funds, and your local housing, affordable housing funds. We also employ these underwriting standards when working with the county on the No Place Like Home program. Were SHRA to administer the new state funding brought about by SB2, known as the Permanent Local Housing Allocation, these policies would govern the deployment of those resources as well. For your awareness, we began the process of updating these policies in 2017 and have held four stakeholder-specific workshops, two workshops in front of the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commission, a workshop in front of the County Board of Supervisors and City Council. We produced three public comment drafts, and the final version in front of you this morning incorporates feedback from a multitude of partners, including City Council, Board of Supervisors, Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commissioners, the Sacramento Housing Alliance, and affordable housing developers such as Jamboree Mutual and USA Properties. Attachment 1 to your staff report lays out some of the key changes. We are recommending a change in funding priorities to move new production above recapitalization of existing affordable housing. And after the Board workshop here in April, we revised the new construction population priority list to be first homeless, households and permanent supportive housing, second veterans, third workforce. Permanent supportive housing projects that include veterans will receive a higher priority for funding. With the changes in inclusionary zoning programs, we have removed inclusionary housing as its own category. Preservation, specifically the need to fund the acquisition and rehabilitation of affordable housing that would convert to market rate without government subsidy, remains the number-one priority. An example of this would be Sutter Place, which had an expiring HUD subsidy contract that the owner was not willing to renew, and was sold to a nonprofit developer to rehab and ensure the long-term continued affordability. We have reduced our monitoring fee for issuing mortgage revenue bonds to bring SHRA's fee more in line with other local government bond issuers within the state, and we will begin requiring 5% of units within a development to be targeted at extremely low-income households. Other significant changes include adoption of an affirmative marketing policy and requiring properties to be 100% smoke-free. We have included some clarifying language regarding Cal HFA's ability to issue bonds in our jurisdiction. As a state entity, they do not need a local government hearing to issue bonds, and our policies outline what steps are required if the city or county housing authority is issuing bonds or holding the public hearing. Staff also proposed language designed to ensure an unbiased process during underwriting. We indicate the developers should work with SHRA staff to resolve differences prior to contacting members of SHRA's governing bodies. This has been a long journey involving many voices, all of whom share the common goal of maximizing SHRA's impact despite limited resources. Staff believe the document you have in front of you this morning will benefit our partners and our community, and we would appreciate your support, and we are available to address any questions you may have.
Supervisor Natale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Susan, just, again, there was quite a bit of text here and revisions, obviously updating, you know, 10 years have passed, and so a number of things that relate to finance and to management. I guess I just wanted to go to, starting on page 19 of the, a strikeout version, and then page 20, and it kind of rolls over to page 21 as well. And this goes to the determinations, and this is an update, obviously, and I think as it relates to community space, resident services, playgrounds, and so forth on these bond projects. And we use the, I guess, threshold, for lack of a better word, of 50 or more units as being the trigger for, for example, some playground equipment for age-appropriate play structure. And I guess I'm curious about that, and just, the previous item was a 32-unit complex, if I'm not mistaken, right? Or, what we just talked about in the previous item, so.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, and again, I'm not using that as the backdrop, but I just say that, so, but, so 50 is an easy number, it's rounded, you know, a rounded number and so forth, and then there's a subsequent trigger, a threshold at 100 that requires an additional. But I think, you know, when we're looking at multifamily, and families, particularly those with children, and we talk about resident services, I guess I would like to see more flexibility built-in. You want certainty for the developers, but I'm not so sure that 50 is the right number. I mean, you know, maybe a number we've used, but maybe it's 40 units, you know, maybe for a complex of 32 that has three-bedroom units that have a lot of families. Now, if you're reserved the ability to make that, that call, certainly within the confines of this policy, then I guess I'm comfortable with that. If not, I'd like to provide some more flexibility, particularly as it relates to those resident services, the quality of not only the housing that's provided, but then those things that I think have, you know, provide us the ability to really offer people, you know, a more full range, but certainly a better living environment, not just from the standpoint of their individual units, but also those things that are in the community, in that multifamily community. And so I guess I would just turn to you and anybody else, but, so, we use 50, but is there a language that we could insert that would give either SHRA, executive director and/or staff, and/or maybe a lower threshold, at least for looking at that? Obviously, it's a financial feasibility of project and, you know, the ongoing maintenance. But it seems to me, whether you've got 12 families living in a complex, or 48 families, or 200 families and/or individuals, that some of those amenities are important baselines for projects of any size. And so recognizing there are some limitations as you get into smaller numbers of units. And so I guess, I see LaShaw coming to the microphone. I'd like to see that we, as we're looking to the future, because we're looking at long-term sustainability of projects, we're looking at long-term viability, but also the quality of life for whatever generation is living there now, but for ones that would fall behind. And so particularly with children and seniors in some cases, but for families. So that's my question.
Okay, LaShaw Dozier, Executive Director.
Hi, LaShaw.
Hi. In fact, we can build in some flexibility. Usually, the constraints are about space, as well as looking at the number of children who'll be in the complex, but we could build in some flexibility that allows us, anytime it's below 50 units, to really make an exception, and wherever possible, include that type of playground equipment, especially, like you said, if there are large bedrooms with a lot of children.
Yeah, it's different. If you have single units or studio units, and you're looking to, you know, engaging to seniors, or to individuals, or, you know, or couples, you know, there are limitations, obviously, under other guidelines that, you know, limit the number of folks per unit. But if we're building these family complexes, and again, then that may be one way that you utilize your space, is you have, you know, you have less two-bedrooms and one-bedrooms, and you have more three-bedrooms, but then it would seem to me, you could still stay under, you know, under 50, and then you don't get that amenity. And I like the fact that you built in a minimum of 1,200 square foot for your community room, I think irrespective of the, of the project, if I'm not mistaken. But I, but to me, those are long-term quality of life for folks that would reside in those apartment complexes. So I don't know what sort of language to change. I don't want to hold this up. I know this has been under a lot of, you know, been reviewed by a lot of eyes, but it just occurred to me that those are important pieces, and if you're going to build it and finance it, let's build in some of those amenities from the get-go.
Yes, we can include that.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Supervisor Natale, would you be comfortable then, just approving this today with the understanding that staff will look at 4.16 and come up with something that gives greater flexibility?
Sure. I mean, that whole section, maybe incorporated to that, but no, I would be very comfortable with that. I'm not looking to hold this up, and again, it was, you know, but before I made an afterthought, I thought we ought to bring it up here today and have a discussion about it.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Peters.
Thank you. I wanted to talk about the fee reductions, which, I'm not against the fee reductions, but I'm just curious as to the methodology that you used. You know, what was the thinking behind that? A few I see went up marginally, $1,000 or less, but what, what brought you to this?
Sure. The, we did a study a couple of years ago when we were embarking on this update, where we received a list of all of the major bond issuers throughout the state of California, and then we had staff who interviewed and collected information to find out, you know, where is SHRA relative to LA County, Anaheim, San Francisco?
Yeah, we had a lot of discussions here in this board room about the fees that the agency charges, so.
Right.
I can understand that you reviewed that.
Yes, and we, and so it was really kind of a deep dive into our peer jurisdictions, and, and so the methodology was really, how do we continue to be able to provide the same level of service in terms of monitoring? As you know, we have staff who go out every year and touch all 200 or plus of our properties, and still be able to, you know, be considered, you know, within the peer group. And so that was really, I think, through that study, and then also sharing with our developer partners, you know, they've had access to that, that potential change, you know, in all three of our public comment drafts. Does that answer your question, Supervisor Peters?
Well, that's the why you looked at it, but
Okay.
the methodology that you use. I'm just curious, is, you know, I just
Are you talking about that table specifically?
Yeah, no, I, well, I have the table, but you, you reduce the percentage fee, and then you went to $100 flat per unit, and then you capped the administrative fee. So I guess the $100 per unit is what interested me. What
Sure.
Is that because of inspections of more units?
So the $100, and this is something we found that was really typical with our peer jurisdictions, so we were lowering the overall rate. And then the $100 per unit relates to the number of SHRA-specific funded units, so depending on, on the gap
How many units in the apartment building were affordable?
And so, for example, if a, if a project did not receive, was only a bond issuance, and it did not receive any additional loan subsidy, there would be no $100 per unit.
I understand now, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. Certainly prepared to, to support the item. And the two comments/suggestions I have really are kind of ancillary to what we're considering, but obviously very related, and it really was part of the discussion I had during my briefing with SHRA staff. The first is, I've become aware that the SB2 funding that we anticipate, and that I know other jurisdictions do as well, including the City of Sacramento, that it's, it's my understanding that county staff are asking for more time, more meetings, to do something. It's not clear what that something is, but my understanding is that the NOFA is staring right at us in terms of it being available here shortly, and then we have a window of time, I believe, to respond to that, that NOFA. I want to make sure that we're not going to unnecessarily tie our own hands by meeting to death over what to do about this new opportunity, and not be prepared to take advantage of every single, you know, hour, minute, and second that we have to prepare a response to the notice of funding availability for SB2. So I don't know if, I see Mr. Leonard being prepared to speak to this, but I would like to suggest that we get this agendized. If there's board action that has to take place to initiate this in earnest, that we initiate this today with some direction to our executive team to bring it forthwith to this board as soon as possible. Again, if that, if we're waiting on board action to start that process, if I'm misunderstanding, please correct me, but that's, that's the first issue. Let me get the second issue out there before I get a response from staff. The second issue has to do with the fact that, again, per my conversation with, with SHRA staff, I was reminded yesterday that our housing trust fund, which is in part fed by a fee that is placed on commercial development. We have our inclusionary housing ordinance, and we have a, we have a fee that's leveled against new market-rate housing, but we also have a commercial side to that, just as the City of Sacramento does. That that fee is, I would, I would argue, is low, especially when you compare it to our largest city in the county. I believe it's more than $2 lower than what the City of Sacramento is, is charging on a square-foot basis. And if I recall correctly, when this board last debated revisions to both the residential side of the inclusionary ordinance and then the commercial side, we decided that because we were trying to come out of a recession at the time, that we thought it might be wise to stay focused on the, on the housing, the market-rate housing side of things, and leave the commercial fee as it was. I'm beginning to feel more strongly that it's time for this board to consider, reconsider that commercial side of the equation, especially given the fact that we have continued growth in the commercial sector in places like McCollum Business Park, and places like Metro, Metro Air Park, which is, you know, beginning to see a lot of interest in terms of development and tenant occupation of the, of some of the spec buildings that are expected out there. So it seems to me it would be incumbent on this board and staff to work together, perhaps sooner rather than later, to have this board formally reconsider that. So those are my two comments. Again, I prefaced it the way I did, because it's not germane necessarily to the immediate action we're being able, or being asked to take today. But if Mr. Leonard or Mr. Gill want to respond to my first concern about the timing of SB2, I'd like to hear a response.
Rob?
Certainly. Supervisor Serna, we do have active discussion, staff-level discussion going on between county staff from different disciplines and SHRA staff. There's been one meeting, and there were a number of vacations that, that delayed the second meeting, which is on the calendar. I'm not sure when, but I know it is coming up very quickly, and the, and the purpose of that is to look at, in essence, what the opportunities will be provided with the NOFA, which we understand is going to come out. It was scheduled to come out in, in September. It has not yet. We don't have any clarity on to when it may come out. What we've seen is, is that any number of different actions associated with SB2 and under new, under other new state funding programs, schedules have been slipping because of essentially the guidelines and policy development going on at, at the state level. We haven't missed out any opportunities, nor do I believe that we, that we are going to. What we will have as a result of these, the staff-level discussions is a better product that comes forward to the board for consideration.
And the minute we have an idea of what we need approval, we'll be in front of the board asking for that, like we did with the previous SB2 funding.
Can I make, make a suggestion, and maybe there's others on this board that want to chime in on this. I'd like to suggest that instead of kind of how we've scheduled what needs to happen before the board considers how we move forward on SB2, that we work backwards from a date. Let's pick a date. Regardless of guidelines, regardless of, you know, vacations, staff vacations, I'd like us to pick a date. And the date that I like to pick is October 8. So, you know, to me, that's, you know, that's what, two weeks away? It seems to me that there's already been some discussion. To me, it also seems not a heavy lift to work out whatever needs to be worked out between our county executive team and SHRA in terms of being prepared, because as soon as that, that NOFA is available, we should be responding that day. We should at least be, you know, getting introductions in a row that day. So shame on us if we don't get prepared for it, especially in light of the, you know, the housing crisis that our constituents remind us about on the hour. So that's what I would like to suggest, is that we work, work backwards from an October 8 date.
Mr. Chair, I'm just on this issue.
Yes.
I guess I, I'm curious, because I know this has come up a couple of different times, and at least in conversation, I think, earlier in the year when we were having a planning, a presentation, I think I may have asked about that time, and obviously, we're still waiting for guidance from those who will actually issue the NOFA, but, you know, in all honesty, irrespective of, you know, what staff work has been done, you know, I don't have a very clear understanding of what opportunities may be currently anticipated, but secondly, what sort of timelines will be driven once regulations are out. And so whether it's an action items or some, you know, other construct for October 8, I think something, you know, sooner rather than later, to understand, not to have make-work, because obviously, there's going to be a lot of work goes into this, but if in fact, as I did understand, that there might be a deadline that would, because apparently, the state obviously is going to, like, like they normally do, you know, a lot of bluster about what needs to be done, and then, you know, take time to get things in place, and then, you know, have a very short deadline for responding, and I understood it was in November. If that's not the case, then, you know, maybe we have a little more time. But I think, to the relevant point, I, I believe it'd be important, and nothing else for an information item, to come before the board, so we know where it stands, obviously, working with both county and SHRA staff and anybody else who is a party to this. Because again, to your point, Rob, you know, I don't anticipate we're going to miss, missing opportunities either, but that would be not a good thing if we did. And so rather than just, you know, kind of leave us all a little bit, I think maybe everybody else has a clear understanding. I don't have a real clear understanding of what needs to be done, and what sort of race we're going to be into once the guidelines and the NOFA are issued. And if, you know, if it came out And if, you know, if it came out, we're only in September twenty fourth today, if it came out before the end of the month, and they said, just do November second, that's a scramble. I mean, this board only meets so often, I assume it will need the application authority may be vested with Mr. Gill or 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 with LaChelle or whoever, but there needs to be some determination and go ahead, greenlighting this board. I think that it would be better to have something, as Mr. Serna suggested, to at least have an information item, and then we'll have a clear understanding. If you need some direction, obviously, you're going to work it out at the staff level, present something to us, so.
I think a couple of things in here, I think at staff level, I think we have an understanding what we need to do. What we're waiting on is what is it coming back to us and what's the proposal we're going to have? That's what we need to work out. So we can endeavor October eighth to bring you something, but it will be pretty light on some of the details behind, because we don't know what all the guidelines are. If the board wants to have a discussion about what what to apply for SB two, that's what I'm trying to find out, is that what the interest is for SB two funding, or is it more how are we going to manage SB two? That's.
Well, who's going to be the lead? I'd say who's going to be the lead? I think that's that's a that's a key piece, who's going to be the lead? And then, secondly, I guess, what's, you know, what's the range of menu items that we can pick from to apply for? Because I think that is, that's, but you got it, you hit both of them, yeah, I'd say yes.
So, yes, so on the lead question, what we've been looking at, same with SB one, is that the county will take lead with SHRA assisting us. And then that question will come back to the board with a menu of options that you will have. These are different projects you have, board, which one do you want to apply for? And we'll work with you and SHRA to respond to that.
Isn't, well, with all due respect, isn't that a, or shouldn't that be a board decision?
Which which component, which project?
Who's taking the lead? I mean, in terms of, you know, offering up as an information item, as Supervisor Nettalie has suggested, at a minimum on October eighth, I would like to, if we're going to do that, then maybe it's worth deliberating as a board in terms of who's taking the lead. I mean, I think there's some merit in considering the fact that we have a housing authority where we have a centralized infrastructure management to look at the, you know, the wide spectrum of everything from tax credits to, you know, management of our housing trust funds, and this would be yet another tool in the toolbox. So at least I'd like to have a conversation about the merit of of doing it one way or the other.
There's no no issue with that. I think what we were thinking about was better coordination, that's one tool set. We have other county departments that participate. So our thought process was if we can centralize as much to have different disciplines in it, is to have the whole array in front of us, work with the board on what we need to apply for. That was our thought process, and absolutely coming back to the board on what needs to be applied for, we're not going to make that decision, because that is something that we need board input on your priorities and where you think the money should flow into different areas that we need, that if you have the needs. So we were not that fixated on who's taking the lead, we'll work with everybody, our concerns more, what are the guidelines, what can we apply for, and how does that meet some of the needs that we have, and then have that discussion with the board members at that point.
I think at a very, at the very least, Mr. Gill, you're hearing from at least two two fifths of the board, maybe more, that there's enough interest, there's enough mystery for some of us about, you know, what's going on on the SB two front, that at the very least, I think we should agendize something for the for October eighth.
Absolutely, I think we should bring something back, and let's have a discussion about what some of the board priorities are, and where would you like to see the funding go to? We will do that. And just one caveat, as I mentioned, is that I think we'll need more assistance from the board, because we might not have all the details behind it, and some of that information will change, as long as the board knows that, and will come back to you and say something shifted or dent, and where should we apply for? So we will absolutely do that.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Frost.
I just remember back in two thousand seventeen, when I first came on board, this was one of the items that I had some concerns about, that we were not competitive, and I wanted to thank LaChelle and all the staff for for looking into this and making sure that we we are, and I support it. But I just wanted you to know, I really appreciate that you went all that work to do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I can move approval.
Well, we do have one member of the public that would like to speak. Parker Evans.
Good morning, Chair, Supervisors. My name is Parker Evans, I'm a project manager at Mutual Housing California. We're a nonprofit affordable housing developer celebrating our thirtieth anniversary this year. We have over a thousand units across twenty properties in Sacramento and Yolo Counties. We're very supportive of this update to the lending policies. It will make these projects substantially more competitive, particularly the reduction of the bond monitoring fee, which will help the cash flow for our one hundred percent affordable projects across the county. That additional cash flow will enable us to serve deeper levels of affordability or leverage that cash flow for additional desperately needed capital for these new projects that we underwrite. This change will have a will have is an especially large impact on large projects that are over fifty, potentially over a hundred units, that's a big savings on those projects. And so ultimately, these adjustments to the policy are going to be one step to help us build more units in less time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans, and good luck with the recent projects that are cropping up in District Two, which we look forward to it. That's the last card I have. Any other comments of the board before we take make a motion?
Second.
Okay, we have motion second. I will just comment that I am three fifths of the agreement here, that I look forward to October eighth and shining some light on the situation, and also the urgency. Thank you. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Next item.
Item number forty-five, the State of Agriculture in Sacramento County, based on the two thousand eighteen Crop and Livestock Report. I think it's okay, it's okay. Good morning, Chair Kennedy and members of the board. Chris Flores, Sacramento County Agricultural Commissioner and Sealer.
Welcome and congratulations.
Thank you, appreciate it. So I'm pleased to be here this morning to update you on Sacramento County's agricultural industry and some of our department activities. This presentation is based on the two thousand eighteen Crop and Livestock Report, and I want to thank our ag producers for their input through our survey. If they didn't provide the data to us, we wouldn't be able to provide this crop report to you. It's very important, and that data gets distributed around the state and is used for economic purposes. I'd also like to thank two of my staff members, Kevin Martin and Laura McCready, for their work on compiling the data and putting this report together. Without their help, this would not be before you as well. Okay, so do I? No. There we go. Okay. So the theme for our two thousand eighteen crop report is our local best celebrating food production in our region, and I have good news to share. The gross value of ag commodities grown in Sacramento County in two thousand fourteen, or two thousand eighteen, sorry, increased by twenty-four million dollars and exceeded the half billion dollar mark. So we're at five hundred and twenty million dollars. It's the largest gross value of ag production in our county ever. Wine grapes, once again, were Sacramento County's top leading ag commodity at over a hundred and eighty-six million dollars. Their overall increase in yield and harvested acres helped them reach this level, and we have over thirty different varieties of wine of wine grapes grown in Sacramento County on over thirty-six thousand acres of ag land. Despite continuing challenges by the dairy industry, milk, market, market milk was our number two value ag commodity at forty-eight million dollars. Statewide in two thousand eighteen, milk and processed dairy products were valued at over twenty billion dollars. California's dairy industry is the largest supplier of milk and processed dairy products in the United States and accounts for twenty percent of all U.S. milk production. Sacramento County dairies contribute to this equation.
Chris, if I just could on that, too, and that most our dairies have not, I would think, if not all, they're family owned.
Correct.
I mean, there are other structures in other states, even in this state, you know, maybe a family, but it's a large corporate structure here for the most part. And we have, and this amount of production comes with probably less than three dozen dairies countywide. I don't know what the number is, but it's it's not a very large number, but.
No, and our average dairy has about three hundred cows, so it's fairly small compared to. So overall, our fruit and nut crops make up almost half of the county's gross production value. In two thousand eighteen, fruit and nut crops were valued at over two hundred and forty-two million dollars. Although cherries and pears decreased decreased in value due to smaller yields, almonds, walnuts, and wine grapes exceeded in their production value. Along with crop statistics, the two thousand eighteen Crop and Livestock Report highlights other ag-related venues and programs. Every year, on behalf of Sacramento County, the Ag Commissioner's Office participates in the Farm to Fork Celebration. Ag department staff spend time talking to visitors about Sacramento County's ag producers or farmers, the food that they produce, and how our department supports them and protects them through our programs. Attendees that we interact with are clearly interested in our local food system and walk away with a better understanding of what they can do to support and protect our local ag. Once again, we will be supporting the Farm to Fork Celebration downtown this Saturday. I'd like to thank you and take this opportunity to thank you for supporting the reestablishment of the Ag Advisory Committee. The committee is an extremely valuable asset to your board, to my office, and to the broader community. The community members represent all facets of agriculture, the UC Extension, and the general public. They provide valuable feedback on agricultural issues, including right-to-farm issues and pesticide issues. The committee meets meets every other month at my office off of Bradshaw Road, and the meetings are open to the public. Another way we celebrate our local food production is through our certified farmers' markets. Sacramento County is lucky to have twenty to twenty-five farmers' markets every year with ten to fifteen certified farmers' markets at any given time. Ag producers located within the certified section of the market are certified by their origin county ag departments. To become certified, farm site visits are conducted, and the inspectors ensure that the growers are actually growing what they are selling. In Sacramento County, in two thousand eighteen, our ag inspector certified over a hundred local farmers. As part of our two thousand eighteen crop report survey, we asked a new question of our growers. We asked them, where do your ag commodities go? So we thought it would be interesting to share some of their answers with you. As you know, microbreweries are an ever-increasing popular business venture here in California and locally in Sacramento. Since two thousand five, we've gone from five breweries to over fifty. Due to the increasing local demand, we are growing hops here in Sacramento County, and those farmers are providing those hops to our local breweries and regionally as well.
Growing hops once again, we were once in a fairly large, you know, region. Kind of went down to almost zero acres, like we had three acres left in the county at one time.
All campus commons was hopped.
Right. I think the first hop acreage was sixteen acres, it was south of Broadway here in Sacramento. Yep, back in eighteen fifty-seven, I think. Sixteen thousand five hundred acres of alfalfa were harvested in two thousand eighteen. Some of it sent out of county, but the majority goes to our local dairies for our dairy cows. And as I said, dairy products are, they supply the milk, fresh milk market, and also the processed dairy in California and across the United States, and are processed into cheese and ice cream, et cetera. Our local pear growers, they sell to the fresh market, they also export a lot of pears to Mexico and Canada. They're used in canned and processed products, and they're squeezed for juice and cider. One of our Delta growers, Pear Cider, is actually being highlighted this year at the Farm to Fork Celebration Tower Bridge Dinner. In two thousand eighteen, our local safflower growers harvested four thousand acres of safflower to a gross value of one point six eight million dollars. Our safflowers are pressed for oil. And then lastly, tomatoes. We do sell some tomatoes for the fresh market, but the majority of them go into processed processing goods.
And all those processing facilities have left this county, though, right? They're now they're now shipped down to the Central Valley?
Yes.
Or or to the east, or west, excuse me?
So in order to help protect our local ag industry, our department hires seasonal aids to service and place eleven different types of insect traps in fruit trees and other host plants throughout the county. The traps are designed to attract non-native invasive pests not currently established in California that are injurious to agriculture. In July of two thousand eighteen, our trappers detected an oriental fruit fly, a pest to over two hundred and thirty different crops. Shortly thereafter, we found fifteen more flies. The presence of these flies triggered a delimitation in the placement of five hundred additional insect traps in a ninety-nine square mile area. It also required the application of additional pesticide treatments and established quarantine boundaries to contain the spread of the pest. Due to the diligence of our farmers, ag aides, and staff from the California Department of Food and Agriculture, the oriental fruit fly was eradicated from Sacramento County, and the quarantine was lifted in May of this year. In addition to our pest detection program, our pest exclusion program aims to intercept pests like the oriental fruit fly before they enter the county. Day in and day out, our staff inspect incoming shipments at points of entry to ensure that there are no hitchhiking pests of concern. One of our most effective tools is the use of our detector dogs and their keen sense of smell. These dogs undergo months of training at the USDA facility in Georgia before being matched up with their human partner. They are trained to sniff out any type of plant material, including soil, vegetables, and fruits. They walk the belts at the parcel facilities and pick out unmarked packages that may be carrying unwanted pests. Their human partners are then able to inspect the packages. You write, you might recall that in two thousand eighteen, your board honored two of the best detector dogs in the state upon their retirement, Dozer and Cairo. Pictured on the slide is our newest detector dog, Taz, with his partner, Mariah. Taz has already proven to be a very effective detector dog and was recently certified to work in the U.S. Postal Service facilities. Taz and Mariah will be demonstrating Taz's skills at the Farm to Fork Celebration on Saturday. And lastly, I would be remiss if I didn't mention the incredible work of our Ways and Measures staff. They work quietly behind the scenes, performing a very important role. Consumers and businesses alike share a confidence in the marketplace with the knowledge that the scales used to weigh their produce or the meters used to dispense their fuel are accurate. Our standards inspectors protect everyone, including the ag industry, from negligent and fraudulent activities. In two thousand eighteen, our standards inspectors verified the accuracy of over seventeen thousand seven hundred weighing and measuring devices in the county and responded to over one hundred consumer complaints. The most, most of the complaints included fuel dispensing inaccuracies, price advertisement inaccuracies, CRV overcharges, and fuel contamination issues.
Excuse me, Chair, so we get those complaints and you validate them, then what sort of corrective actions are you authorized under your office then to to do?
So if the if they do not meet tolerance, you know, then the company or business has to hire a register. to hire a registered service agent to come out and correct it. And then they notify us that it's been corrected, and we go back out and retest.
And who resolves a consumer complaint?
Oh, we do.
If they got overcharged?
Yeah, no, we do. So our, yeah.
Mediate that, then, Chris.
Yes, we do, absolutely. Yep.
Okay, thanks.
And so that concludes my presentation this morning. I just want to thank you for allowing me to be here today and update you on the ag industry, and I'd be happy to take any questions at this time.
Are there any other questions? Supervisor Nettoli?
Yep. Lots of questions. Certainly thank Chris and her staff for their work on behalf of the entire community, but certainly their interface and very important interface with the agricultural community. And I think it's impressive that in a county, obviously, of a million and a half people and certainly a thousand-acre landmass, that we have over a half a billion farm gate activity in the year that was presented to us here, the 2018 year. What I wanted to ask about, and I spoke with Mr. Gill about this yesterday in my briefing, that some time ago, I know I'd asked many years ago about the opportunity that we, as a county, because we operate a number of institutions and facilities, and I think with the, you know, significant growth in the farm-to-fork movement, but also with our fresh growers recognizing that a number of the products are seasonal, but nonetheless, we, I would venture a guess of how many millions of dollars we send a year on food, you know, and other items for people who are in county, county facilities, be in institutions. And I guess what I'd like to maybe have is take a look at NAV and working with certain ag commissioner or general services. Is there a way to, you know, buy direct from local growers? And again, it may be seasonal, but, you know, I think as we talk about conditions in some of facilities, and we heard about that this morning in a different light, but it would seem to me that, you know, good, healthy food fair is good for, you know, body, mind, and soul. And the ability for us, again, because some of the marketing, obviously, is for products that are shipped overseas, and they have a longer shelf life and so forth, or a shorter shelf life. I'd like to see us really take a look at it to, you know, and if it isn't in county, certainly within the region, maybe do that already, but I'm just not familiar enough and again, haven't really posed a question in recent years. And so I'd like us to really take a serious look at how we might buy local, farm-direct.
We would love to look into that.
Okay, great, thanks. That's all I had.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Chris, thank you. Not only, as Supervisor Nettoli said, the great work you guys do. Unfortunately, you were called upon to do too much in District 2 last year, but I appreciate all the efforts. But also, every year I enjoy getting these. I mean, they, they're a fun read, actually, and so thank you very much.
All right, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, that is our last timed item of the morning, so we will go to those items off agenda. And I'm not sure, is there anyone from SEIU in the audience?
He knew the answer to that question.
What we're going, I do have two cards. It was two speaker slips. We're going to, being as you are county partners, and what you have to say is valuable to all of us, we're going to allot 15 minutes to be used at, you know, your, how you see fit. I've spoken with your leadership, and I would expect that they will be prepared to work with, and we agreed that that was, those parameters were fine. So with that, I will ask the clerk to set the clock at 15 minutes. Keep in mind, you don't have to take the entire 15 minutes, but I'll call Tammy Ostrowski
Okay. Honorable Board of Supervisors, my name is Tammy Ostrowski. I am the SEIU Local 10 to 1 President of the Sacramento County Supervisor Chapter and Program Specialist in Child Protective Services. We come before you today because our contract expired on June 30th, and despite beginning negotiations in January, we are at pre-impasse nine months later. The county has held fast to their initial position despite our best efforts to offer reasonable counteroffers. We respectfully request the Board of Supervisors intervene to conclude negotiations swiftly and fairly. I will now take a few moments to summarize why supervisors and program specialists are vital members of a team that serves the people of Sacramento County. You're about to receive something, a gift from our, from us. This year marks the 50th anniversary of the Apollo 11 moon landing. Before you is a model of a NASA space capsule. The capsule carried highly-trained astronauts on a dangerous and challenging mission to land on the moon and safely return home. To merely state that we would go to the moon was not enough for success. The mission could not have been accomplished without the capable and dedicated members of Mission Control who provided monitoring and support when things were going as planned, and guidance, troubleshooting, and reassurance when problems threaten the mission and human life. The Departments of Human Assistance and Child, Family, and Adult Services are tasked with a mission no less challenging than the mission conceived to go to the moon. We are committed to serve children and adults to promote safety, self-sufficiency, and independence. We are committed to providing public benefits, employment assistance, and supportive services to promote self-sufficiency and independence. We strive to achieve the well-being of children in our community by protecting children, strengthening families, providing permanent homes, and building community partnerships. We promote, protect, and preserve the dignity of all seniors and dependent individuals so they live with respect in caring, healthy, and safe environments. To achieve these goals, we, the supervisors and program specialists of SEIU, are in essence Mission Control. We are the bridge between mandate and action. We provide staff with the necessary training, guidance, and support to carry out the mission of delivering critical services to members of our community. We utilize the principles of safety organized practice and core practice model when supervising and working with our staff, and in turn assist them with employing the same principles in their work with clients. It includes promoting teamwork, forming and strengthening partnerships, and building upon strengths based on underlying needs. These skills are necessary for problem-solving, assessment, and effective service delivery to most effectively pride for the safety and security of children that are victims of child abuse, including those who are commercially sexually exploited. We train, guide, and direct our staff so that they can help our clients overcome barriers that are impeding their ability to live independent, fulfilling lives with safety and dignity. Often, we roll up our sleeves and work side-by-side with staff or work directly with clients. Here are just a few examples of how we do whatever it takes to support staff and the overall mission. A foster care eligibility supervisor, they go the extra mile to troubleshoot foster care payments to support our staff, caregivers, and the needs of our children. A human assistance program specialist assisted a client with a severe mental problem and was scheduled for sight-saving eye treatments and surgery the next day by avoiding a break in aid due to inter-county transfer difficulties. An informal supervision supervisor drove a parent to the hospital who has experienced a psychiatric crisis for a 5150 evaluation. DHA supervisors employ patience, compassion, and creativity in teaming with their social workers to assist customers seeking public assistance that suffer severe behavioral health conditions, homelessness, and illiteracy. An adult protective services family service supervisor went above and beyond to assist her staff by delivering emergency food bags to clients in need. Emergency response supervisors, after a full day, remain directly available as late as necessary to their social workers in the field investigating immediate response allegations of child abuse to provide support and ensure they arrive home safely from the field. DHA supervisors in the family stabilization program ensure customers in the lobby are seen, payments and motel vouchers issued, and data entered into the computer in an effort to assist their social workers during extended periods of increased volume of work. CPS supervisors go out with their social workers during and after hours to assist with bringing children into protective custody. CPS supervisors write court reports and visit children and families to assist social workers when they are stretched to their limits or on leave and no one is available to volunteer for assistance. The paralegal supervisor steps in to help her busy staff serve legal papers, run legal documents to court, process runaway warrants, be the gatekeeper for records requests, and meet and help clients who have been hostile and threatening to her staff. Finally, a program specialist facilitates team meetings to discuss coordination of services and address safety concerns for commercially sexually exploited children. Whatever the myriad of roles our staff play in the delivery of services to our community, our supervisors and program specialists are there to train them, guide them, and support them all along the way. In closing, the Apollo astronauts could not have completed their mission alone. Mission Control was as critical to the success of the goal to safely journey to the moon and back as the astronauts in the capsule. We are Mission Control. We, the program specialists and supervisors, serve the most vulnerable members of Sacramento County with compassion and dignity. We strive to guide practice, service delivery, and decision-making so that our staff may be more effective in their roles working with the community. Today, we stand united in the fight for a fair and equitable contract. We demand that our critical role be recognized and that we are treated with respect. We expect negotiations for our contract to be held in good faith and concluded swiftly. We want a contract where the county demonstrates loud and clear, "SEIU, Mission Control, we need you." Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. The next, the next card I have is Beth Becker.
She's actually going to be next, if that's okay?
It's your 15 minutes.
So my name is Mercedes Riegelman. I am the Secretary for SEIU Chapter 10 to 1 in Sacramento County. I've met with some of you before, and it's really hard to follow Tammy's speech, but I get the luxury of talking about the money and the finances part. And so most of what is hinging on our contract is we are one of the few chapters that still has the 10% spread language in our contract, where the county shall maintain a 10% spread between the supervisors and their highest-paid subordinates. And through the negotiations, the county has come back repeatedly asking to change that word to endeavor, which was explained to us as we then had to negotiate the 10% spread, that they would not consider it until it was maybe 4%, 5% or lower. To us, that's unacceptable, especially when the 10% spread for a majority of us is really not 10%. It's more like 5%. And for some of us, there, it's a reverse 10%. So using the master's-level supervisors as the kind of the base for the explanation, our highest-paid subordinates, if you work in CPS, actually make 5% less than us because they get a differential that we do not receive. So we don't even have a 10% spread. So if the 10% spread goes away and changes to endeavor, our workers will thus be making the exact same amount of us, as us, before the county even decides to look at it. And that's unacceptable, that the workers should make more than their supervisors. Additionally, there was, our last contract, a change in the pay for the program specialists, where the supervisors, they've always been tied to the, not tied, but they've always been parallel with the master's-level supervisors, and now they're making less than us. So just imagine going to your doctor, your family doctor, and being referred to a heart surgeon, and that heart surgeon getting paid what the phlebotomist is getting paid. That's how our system currently works. So if you have a family doctor, they refer you to a specialist who should be specialized in their care, and you're going to get the basic care of a phlebotomist. Not that there's anything wrong with being a phlebotomist, but they're not heart surgeons, right? They're, they're not. They don't have the education or the level, and they haven't gone through all that training and everything. They are not the experts on hearts. They're experts at drawing blood. They're different. And for somebody to have to come in who's been on the job for four years and make more than our specialists, so our people that have been there make now more than our program specialists, where we go to for assistance, guidance, help, that help guide us, is kind of absurd, especially when we're dealing with everything that Tammy already laid out for you. So that's one thing we would like to address and make sure that is addressed in our contract and that that be corrected as we were promised on our last contract negotiations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Beth Becker, and I'm the Vice President, and I couldn't even keep up with Tammy. She, I could just say ditto to everything she said. But I'm here to represent all of the members of SEIU, the program specialists, and supervisors. And what we were hired for was to be a trusted servant to the citizens of Sacramento County. That's it. That's what we do, and we do a great job of it. The sad thing about it is, in this negotiation, is that we feel very unappreciated for what we do do. We don't feel like anything that we do makes a difference. We sit, we write policies, we write workflows, we write procedures, and we absolutely run the buildings when the program managers are not in the buildings. And we do it with dignity and integrity. And to go through a negotiation when we don't feel appreciated for doing the job that we do, it gets real frustrating. And as Mercedes talked about that 10%, I mean, I've been here for 33 years. Stuff has gone downhill from there. But in this bargaining unit, that's our one last thing, 10% spread. And Mercedes talked about it in relation to a master's degree supervisor. Well, the same as over in, well, in both departments. We can't even get people to apply to be supervisors any longer. Why do it? You know, you make the same amount of money now without the responsibilities. So all I would like to ask is that we could feel more like we're bargaining in good faith, which right now, it doesn't feel like that. We've been bargaining for nine months with no movement. Just seems like each of the proposals that are passed over are just copied and pasted from one, from the last one to the next one, with maybe one little difference. And in my opinion, after being on four bargaining teams, that's not movement. Whereas SEIU has taken a lot of time to put proposals together to, to represent a real diversified amount of members. We have a lot of different classifications, which isn't easy to do, but we do the best job we can. In closing, I would never would have thought that our contract was going to come down to one word, and that is changing from "shall" to "endeavor." And that's really, in my eyes, what's happening with this. I just would really hope that you could assist us in talking to the right people about getting this negotiating over with, with a good, fair contract. Thank you.
Thanks, Beth. Thank you very much.
Hi. I wasn't aware that I needed to fill out a card. I was told I didn't have to, so I hope I can have this next 44 seconds.
Don't, you got 43 seconds.
Okay. I'm Sandra Mattingly. I'm with DC Fast Senior Volunteer Services, and I'm here to talk about going above and beyond for all these folks behind me by putting my personal stamp on it. We had a foster grandparent volunteer who was precariously housed, and we had to go by and pick up a paper for her, and when we pulled up, the place where she was living had weeds thigh-high. She was living in these folks' garage, sleeping on their couch. I was not paid, instructed, even asked to do this, but I went home and put it on my own Nextdoor account. Could we possibly find a room for this lady to rent within her means? I had several people step up, but the one lady that did step up said that she had room, and these two have become Fast friends. She has her own television, her own restroom, kitchen privileges. The lady even lets her drive her vehicle when she goes out of town. Another foster grandparent volunteer, I'm with Sacramento County Senior Volunteer Services, foster grandparents, senior companion, and RSVP programs. But another foster grandparent volunteer.
Can you wrap up? We're over.
Yes. One of them was asked to please wear undergarments, wear a bra to her sight. She had lost so much weight, she couldn't afford one. I took her to the store, bottom out of my pocket. The lady, in her 60-plus years, had never been to a drive-thru window. I bought her food through the drive-thru window at Chick-fil-A. Life is experiences, and I'd like to feel like I'm helping provide experiences to help our volunteers live full lives, just as everyone behind me. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So thank, thank you all for. It's much appreciated. I will say, I understand that there are ongoing negotiations, and I think that I can speak on behalf of the entire board to say that at the conclusion of those negotiations, we are extremely hopeful that the message will be Houston, we do not have a problem. Thank you. With that, I believe our morning session has come to an end, and we will recess to closed session. Thank you. Next item.
Item 46 is the Marietta Gardens Circle K Convenience Store Service Station and Car Wash. It's a request for a use permit, special development permit, and design review for an automobile service station, convenience store, restaurant with drive-through, and car wash for a property located at 7225 Marietta Drive in the Kasumnas Community. The environmental document is an addendum to prior final supplemental environmental impact report. And also, this item does require an oath.
Oh, thank you. Ms. Muffet.
Yes, do you want to? Okay. So, I do have a brief PowerPoint on this item. As the clerk indicated, it's the Marietta Gardens Circle K Convenience Store Service Station and Car Wash. It is located in the Rancho Marietta area of the Kasumnas Community at 7225 Marietta Drive, approximately 1,000 Feast Eves, east of the Marietta Drive-Jackson Road interchange, and it is in an area that's been planned for commercial as part of the previous Marietta Gardens project. The application before you today is for a use permit for the service station in the commercial zone, extended convenience store hours from 5:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. for the roof canopy structure to be close to five feet, and that's the top of the roof, above the clearance level. A drive-through window within 300 feet of residential, a special development permit related to landscape screening, a reduction in landscape between the drive-through lane and public right-of-way, increase in service station signage, and an increase in the number of directory signs and design review. This graphic is the site plan. They are not taking access directly off of Jackson Highway, but basically, you would come down Oakville Lane and access the project from Marietta Drive. The next graphic is the landscape plan, which is also always a little bit easier of a graphic to be able to see what's going on at the project site with the service station and the car wash. These are the elevations, and has been considered by staff and the Design Review Advisory Committee to be of good-quality design. There's also proposed signage shown on this graphic for the area.
$2.39 for gas, pretty good price.
I don't know if the price is a...
You go get all you can today.
We're not putting the price in the use permit.
I know, but it's showing right there.
Some of the key points are that the proposed drive-through shares a building with the proposed convenience store. It will have amplified noise, and the noise source is less than 300 feet away, but it is across the busy Jackson Highway area. And there was an environmental coordinator addendum that determined that the prior negative declaration for the other project was adequate and appropriate. So, the recommendations before you are from the Design Review Advisory Committee recommending the project be found in compliance with the design guidelines. The Kasumnas Community Planning Advisory Council has an advisory recommendation for approval of 5-0, staff recommendation for approval, and a planning commission recommendation for approval. And then the final slide is the recommended actions that are in your board report. So, we do have an applicant representative here, and that concludes the staff presentation.
Thank you very much. And would, is, could you show a hand for who's here to speak on this item? Okay, then, if you can, those that intend to speak, you'll need to be sworn by our clerk. If you could stand and raise your right hand, she'll take care of that.
Do you swear to tell the truth and the whole truth, that the testimony that you're about to give this board is the truth, so help you God, if you do not swear, do you so affirm? And when you get to the podium, please state for the record the statement, "I have been sworn," and state your name.
Thank you very much. I don't have any cards, so if the applicant would come forward.
John Sullivan, on behalf of the developer, this is the project builder.
If you could speak one at a time, so you can speak in between the two microphones, that's how we can hear you. One at a time, there we go. In between the microphones. There we go. Thank you.
We just want to add that the project has met the Design Review, CPAC, Planning Commission, all unanimous. And there is a big mowing strip that we added, or a landscape strip we added between the Caltrans right-of-way and the wall, which doesn't, it shows additional 20 feet of landscaping of wildflowers along the highway.
Okay. Are there any questions of the board? I don't have any comment slips. Ms. Frost.
I don't have any questions. It looks like you were very flexible and did some good work in making this, in addressing everybody's concerns, and I can move approval if the board doesn't have further questions.
I'd second it. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, right now, I'm going to take, I have, are you ready, George? I have an off-agenda speaker, and we're a little bit ahead, so I will take that now. George Azar, Bill Davis, and Greg Vaughn. Greg Vaughn, Jr. Good afternoon. Welcome.
Thank you for allowing us to come in front of you today. I'm Bill Davis. I happen to be a former retired county employee. Good to see you again.
Yeah, I recognize you. Good to see you.
I worked at the Department of Child Sports Services. We're here today to let you know, we've started a new business in the Natomas community, Davis Sports Academy. We're a baseball, softball training facility. We're having our grand opening on October 19th. And, Mr. Serna, we'd like to invite you and the whole board, but specifically, we're in your district, and would love to see you out there. We have, if I could, can you have the whole packet, Greg? If I could give these to the clerk. I've got copies of a press release and a flyer that we did, and I'll give them to the clerk. There's a set for each of you here.
Great.
I just want to introduce myself. I'm George Azar, good friend of Mr. Serna there.
High school buddy.
And welcome, everybody, if you're able to come out. I'd like you to come out and see what we're going to do with these kids and build up our baseball community out there in Natomas. Coming from 21 years of running a taco truck, jumping into the baseball scene, it's like, what are you doing? But I think it's a great thing. Been running the league out in South Natomas for the last almost three years now, and I'm excited to move on to this new adventure. This is one of our young trainers here, Greg Vaughn, Jr.
Yeah, just like George said, I'm one of the instructors, and our grand opening is October 19th. We would love for all you guys to come out and just support our business.
Right on. Great.
Yeah, well, Greg's pretty famous his own right, too, I think. Few years in the majors, if I remember.
That's my dad.
That's his dad.
Otherwise, he looks really good. Working out there at Davis's gym, I figure it keeps him in good shape, looking good, so. Anyway, congratulations, guys.
I've got a pretty extensive baseball background. While I worked for the county, I did baseball training and ran club teams on my own time. Once I retired, I got to come to my passion. So, when you look at the flyers, there's some names there. All of those are personal friends of mine. One of them is my brother, who's agreed to come up and appear for us and help make this a quality event. So, we're going to have games for the kids, we'll have food there. It's a family event. That's the way we want to present it, and that's how we're going to run it. We'd love to see you there.
When you say "food," do you tacos?
Might be. I think so.
Thank you very much, gentlemen, for being here. Appreciate it. Thank you for everything you're doing. Okay, I'm going to take one more off-agenda speaker. We have one more card, and that's Amar Shergill.
Hi, thank you, supervisors, for taking time. I wanted to speak to you regarding the EE OAC, which is the Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Committee. Thank you for allowing me to serve on that committee for over a year now. But we haven't been able to achieve quorum this year, although we've been meeting a number of times in smaller numbers. And we have a report, which we drafted at the end of last year. We couldn't get quorum to actually vote and submit it. So, I've come before you today, and I'll leave copies of this, and hopefully, we can have the supervisors look at it. But there's nothing particularly controversial at the EE OAC committee. We review the workforce statistics and try to make some suggestions or remark when it seems that diversity goals are not being met. So, with regard to this report, if we look at the Sheriff's Department, for instance, the Sheriff's Department has done a fantastic job doing outreach. They have certainly gone beyond their duty and what you might think is reasonable to try to get diverse applicants to apply. But despite all of those efforts, we have noted that the total number of African-American employees has decreased in recent years, and the percentage of African-American employees in the Sheriff's Department has decreased. In 2017, less than 7% of employees and new hires were African-American, while we know the workforce composition in Sacramento is certainly higher. So, they have some challenges. And I think with regards to the Sheriff's Department and a number of other departments we've looked at, the challenge is not that they're failing to work in good faith on these issues, it's that there isn't tracking. So, if they go out to a number of events, they can't track the results from those events all the way through the application process and into hiring. So, they don't actually know, and this is true in a number of departments, they don't actually know what's working. So, I'd like to ask the county to maybe provide some resources for, not just Sheriff's Department, but for all departments, to determine where they should be spending more time, what actually gets more women to apply, what gets more diverse applicants to apply. You know, for instance, on this one-page report, at the airport, we have women employed at 28%, and it's been like that for over five years, and they really don't have a good way of figuring out why that's the case. So, they need help. The Agricultural Commission, they had five employees hired in 2017. Only one was a minority. They have no African-Americans out of a total employee workforce of 25 people. The County Council Department, who we know are trying hard to hire diverse employees, they have 80% women, but new hires are 50% minority, but hardly any minority men are in that office. So, I could go on about some other issues, but I just wanted to bring this to your attention because there's really no good way, other than public comment, because we just can't achieve quorum in our committee. So, thank you very much. And to whom shall I give this document so that you can review it?
Yes, Mr. Serna.
Thank you. Well, I know this is an item that's not on the agenda, so we cannot formally consider it or act on it per the Brown Act. First of all, I appreciate you taking the time to be here. It kind of begs the question, is there a structural problem in terms of not being able to have a quorum? That kind of troubles me. So, please come back to the podium, if you would.
So, it's my understanding that we have a couple of missing assignments yet that people haven't been appointed. I know that the application processes are out there, so maybe we just have difficulty getting people in. But also, perhaps, we just need to lower the quorum requirement, so that we can just achieve quorum with a lower number of people.
Okay. Well, I appreciate you letting us know that. I'm looking to our county executive to diagnose what has been, not just substantively what's been presented, because I think that's very important, some of the concerns and focus that's been expressed here about room for improvement, that's pretty clear in different departments. But maybe we ought to explore what we can do to enhance participation. It always concerns me when we have a county-sponsored body that is unable to find quorum thresholds, and when they feel that they need to have some representative during public comment on items not in the agenda, that should be a red flag for all of us. So, I'd like to make sure that we don't lose sight of those two things. So, again, thank you for being here. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And I should make clear, the report is draft, has not been voted upon, but I don't think there's anything controversial in there that we wouldn't approve.
You were very clear in the way it was on the headline, so we know that, and appreciate the delivery of the report, Amar. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Okay, that's all the cards I have for off-agenda. I'm going to go out of order here, clerk, if you don't mind, since we have a large number of people that want to speak on one particular item, and number 48, probably a lot fewer people, and therefore, let's be more efficient. So, we will move to item number 48 before we hear 47.
Okay, item 48, approve the 2019 Neighborhood Traffic Management Program Traffic Plans. Let me give them a second to readjust the PowerPoints.
There's a PowerPoint, yes.
Yeah.
Excuse me. Good afternoon, Chair Kennedy and members of the board. My name is Lou Lee.
I'm sorry. Before you start, is there anyone here to speak on item 48?
Yes.
Okay, one, two?
I have three cards.
Okay, all right, sorry. Thank you.
So, my name is Lou Lee from the Department of Transportation. Today, I'm here to request the board to consider the approval of four traffic plans. I do have a quick PowerPoint that I want to go through and discuss these four plans. So, a quick background, beginning of the year, the board approved the funding for 39 projects in the 2019 NTMP projects to address speeding concerns on residential streets. So, after the approval, staff proceed with the traffic plan design and start surveying the neighborhood to get the built consensus for these 39 projects. So, a quick go-through, we do this every time, the guidelines for the NTMP approval and what a support rate means. So, generally, the support rate, one is less than 65%. Basically, not qualified for further consideration. And if the support rate is between 66% to 74%, requires a board hearing, and most of these, three out of four plans we'll bring to the board today, is fall within this category, where it's 66% and 74% range. And the project with support rate greater than 75% can go forward with construction without further action from the board, unless a request for the board hearing is filed with a department. So, one of the four projects today falls into that category. So, the 2019 NTMP projects had 39 projects. 34 of the projects have greater than 75% support rate across the county. So, three projects is between the 65% and 74% support rate, and two projects less than 65%. So, within that, 34 projects, this one project had asked the Department of Transportation to be presented to the board for presentation to consider the final traffic plan. So, I'm going to get into a little bit more detail about these four traffic plans here. The first three traffic plan is far within the range of 65% and 74%. Illinois Avenue is the first one. This is located just on the west side of Hazel Avenue, south of Sunset. We do have a mixture of support and also opposition from the street, ranging from also, uh, opposition from the street, uh, ranging from, um, resident doesn't think the speed table needed at all on the street, and then you have folks, uh, on the street wanting more. Uh, initially, the traffic plan was proposed having three-speed table kind of space throughout, uh, the segment, and then, uh, because the comment from the residents and adjacent residents, we had, uh, made adjustment. So, the final plan only included two-speed table, uh, which kind of also having, um, uh, some resident live on the street thinking the third one should be, uh, kept i- its original location, but the final plan is included with, uh, two-speed tables. Uh, Maraga Drive, um, is another one that, uh, we initially proposed a two-speed table. Uh, this is, uh, near Dewey and Winding Way area. Uh, so, it does a mixture of existing all-way stop sign already on the street, the speed table just adding more to getting people to slow down. So, because a lack of support on one end of the street, uh, so, the final plan included, uh, one-speed table mixing with a lot of, um, uh, existing all-way stop signs on the street. Blue Oak Drive is in, um, it's the third one here on the, on the table. It's the, um, it's in the Orange Vale area. It's a windy, um, hilly, uh, street, so, there's a lot of residential with cul-de-sac, uh, sets deeper into the street, and then, um, yeah, some, uh, all-way stop along the street as well. So, um, the plan proposed for two-speed table because the comments throughout the outreach process we receive from the residents, so we had to make adjustment along the way to shift the location. Uh, at the end, we, uh, had final two locations. Just this morning, I learned that, uh, a resident adjacent to the speed table had contacted our office and was hesitating in supporting this table in front of his, his or her house there. So, we'll continue to work with that resident to, uh, reach, if we need to make minor adjustment, uh, we certainly will do that as well. So, the, the last, uh, the fourth plan, uh, on the board here, um, is the Kingbird Way. Uh, this is, uh, the neighborhood, uh, near Don Julio and Elcorn Avenue in that, uh, just south of that intersection in that neighborhood. So, uh, we have, uh, proposed a total of four-speed table, uh, speed bumps initially, uh, due to lack of support and adjacent resident at times making comments do not support the speed bump in front, uh, their house. So, we have-
Wait, is it, you said lack of support. Doesn't it say support rate is seventy-six percent?
Uh, the overall, we have the seventy-six support, but specifically for one-speed bump in front of, uh, a group of house there, they, the resident opposed to it.
Just want to be clear on that.
Yes, just one-
Contradictory information.
Yes, just one-speed bump. Uh, so, uh, staff, uh, attempt to make some change, to look for another alternate location. Uh, however, with the new location, we're still getting opposition from the adjacent residents. So, the final plan's ending up with three-speed bumps on the street. Uh, so, so generally, the four plans in front of, uh, the board here, uh, we all make, uh, staff had made greater effort to make adjustment, uh, work with the resident to, to seek, um, a degree of compromises, uh, for these plans. Uh, they're definitely not the perfect plan, but we believe this definitely is definitely a good step moving forward to getting traffic calming and speed reduction on the street. So, uh, with that, I'd like to move to the final slide, and, and staff recommend, uh, the board approve the four traffic plans and, uh, direct the staff to proceed with the, uh, implementation. I conclude my, uh, presentation, and, uh, available for questions.
Any questions from the board?
Not on the four plans.
Here from our speakers?
Uh, sorry. Is there any questions of staff, the board?
Not on the four plans, but just, uh, in general, did you want to hear speakers first? I just, hey, have a-
Yes.
If you'd like, yes.
Okay, that's fine.
So, we're gonna hear from the speakers, if there's no questions specifically at this time. Jeff Lanzaro? Jeff Lanzaro?
Jeff Lanzaro, are you here?
Okay. Hugh Brady? Mr. Brady?
There he is.
Good afternoon, supervisors.
Good afternoon.
My name is Hugh Brady. I live on the corner of Creekwood and Illinois Avenues, and I am urging you today to deny the speed bumps. Speed tables sounds better, but it's still speed bumps. Speed bumps belong in shopping centers. I, I think you should know additional information about the one, the speed proposal on, for Illinois Avenue. In the one case, the county had to go back for a second vote in order to get sufficient numbers to qualify for these category therein. Uh, the second vote was the one where all of a sudden, the speed bump just south of Rancho and Court disappeared. And in, in the disappearance of that speed bump, it, it stops all advantage of having speed bumps on that street. Number one, we don't know when the request was made. As you were told, the Illinois Avenue is one street off of Winding Way. If the request was made before the work on Hazel Avenue was complete, then it may no longer even be valid. Because we believe, many, many of the residents believe that a lot of traffic was diverted from one, from Hazel Avenue onto Illinois Avenue during that construction period, which is now finally over. Finally, I say, because that project dragged on forever.
Can, can you wrap up, sir?
As I say, we don't know when the request was made, if it is still valid. I re, I wonder why we are penalizing thirty-five mile-an-hour speed limit on the street, and we are penalizing these, all the people are running legally with speed bumps.
Thank, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could, could we have DOT comment on his questions, please?
If you'd like.
Thank you. When did the application come in?
Um, I don't have the specific date, but it was during the 2017, uh, timeframe, seventeen to eighteen. That's why it falls into this cycle here. Hazel Project is right around that time finishing up as well.
How did it take two years to get to the board?
For the time it gets submitted in two-seventeen, um, there's a cutoff for the previous, uh, side, funding cycle, and this round, it comes around to the, so, the board approved, there was a delay in approving, uh, last cycle, that's why. There's a little bit delay in the funding approval earlier this year.
Well, I have a problem with that, taking two years to get here, I have to tell you. I, I think that's not very efficient. Um, and then I didn't really understand the question. I guess it was more comments, if it's a thirty-five mile-an-hour speed limit, why do we need, uh, why is there a request for speed bumps? But they, they come in because people are speeding and, and neighbors are complaining.
Why twenty miles an hour?
Excuse me, sir. Sir, please, no outbursts.
Okay.
Thank you.
I, I, can I have a follow-up question on that?
Yes.
He intimated that there was a construction, construction that was altering the traffic patterns during the time of deliberating this. So-
Go ahead.
When did the construction end, and was the vote after everything, the dust had settled and traffic was back to normal?
Um, the Hazel Project was com- completed roughly around 2017. So, during that time, there was, you know, Hazel Project happened in the, in the span of two to three years. So, there were, at time, there, they had to reroute traffic. But during the outreach and the, this traffic data, it's, this is after the Hazel Project.
So, that there was no, there was no longer traffic that was being diverted into-
Correct, correct.
Into this, okay.
Correct. It was, I would deem, we would deem that as normal traffic condition, uh, since then.
Thank you.
Ms. Sturch.
Excuse me. Um, my name's Jana Sturch, and, uh, my family and I have lived on Illinois Avenue since nineteen seventy-
I'm sorry, could you speak up a little bit, please? It's kind of hard to hear you.
I'm a little nervous, I'll do-
Oh, well, you know, it's-
We don't bite. Hard.
Um, we've lived there for forty-four years, and our home directly faces Illinois Avenue. And, um, it's a street with no sidewalks, no curbs and gutters, no, uh, bike trails. It's a very narrow street. And, um, during the construction on, on Hazel, it was pretty bad, but that traffic pattern has continued. Um, during commute traffic now, people are used to using Illinois, and in the mornings, I can't pull out of my driveway or cross the street to go for a walk. And during the late commute time, it's the same way. So, I, I just want to address that, that the traffic pattern is consistent still, even though, uh, Hazel's finished. Um, so, even not during commute traffic, we have people speeding by, on motorcycles, cars. There is definite speeding issue. Uh, it used to be a street rarely used, but, um, it's not that way anymore. And I think the speed tables should help, um, and provide slower traffic and more safe time for people on bikes and on feet, on foot. And I'm hoping, perhaps, it will encourage people who still take the shortcut on Illinois to go to Hazel and on the three lanes that have been prepared for that kind of traffic. So, I urge you to vote for the speed tables. I'd wish the three were still there, and, um, my card was in the mail right away saying, "Yay, county!" So, we're, I'm hoping that you will vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. One more time, Jeff Lanzaro, are you here?
Yeah.
Okay. That's all the speaker slips I have.
I'd say, I, I have an email from, uh, John and Adele Briggs, uh, urging a yes vote on the Illinois Avenue, uh, project.
Okay, since we have no more speakers, somebody's waving.
I would speak for Blue Oak Drive.
Well, if you want to speak, just fill out a speaker card and come down and speak. You did?
Yeah.
I, I apologize. We have about a hundred cards up here today, so.
Anybody else planning to speak that didn't get the, that wasn't called?
Hey, um, my name is Paul Bonaslawski, and I've li, I live on Blue Oak Drive, and I've been there since nineteen eighty-six. Uh, Blue Oak Drive's a fairly long road. It only has one stop sign. So, um, it's essentially uncontrolled, and it's between Madison and Main, so it's a classic cut-through street. So, there's traffic constantly, and it's, it's moving fairly fast. And I live where the proposed speed table would be by Planting, and that's at the end of a co, a pretty hot corner, and cars come around that thing, and it's, you hear the wheels squealing, and, you know, it's just ma, it's like crazy out there. Um, in fact, this morning, I went out just to put my garbage in the garbage can. A car came from Main, it's probably doing about fifty miles an hour, and it had to hit that corner. It, it couldn't just, you know, go the normal route. It had to go into practically the sidewalk to, to cut around the corner. So, that, that happens, you know, frequently. It's not unusual. And, um, the use, there was a firehouse on Main, but they closed it. And, uh, years ago, folks wanted to have, um, that speed tables put in, but they were told that they couldn't do that because fire trucks had to have access to go through on Blue Oak to go to, uh, Madison from Main. But the, the firehouse is now closed. There's no reason now not to have the speed tables put out there. It's badly needed. It's, it's wild out there. It's crazy. So, if you guys could get it together, definitely put those speed tables up. And that's all I really have to say.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, then, uh, we'll bring it back to the board.
I thought Don had something he wanted to say.
Yeah, I had a general question, just before we get into the, any specifics.
Yeah.
This relates to, um, uh, one of the locations, um, in District Five, um, number thirty-nine, actually, the one, last one on the list. I'm supportive of that. I know the neighborhood's been, um, advocating for this for some time. What I wanted to point out, though, to Lou and to Reza and others, is that, um, this is an area that continues to develop, and one of the things that, as we go through mapping for new subdivisions, and we look at locations for schools and parks, and, uh, particularly here, in this area, a particular area where Waterman Road is being extended through, but it's been clo, you know, it hasn't been opened up yet, so traffic has been diverted through the neighborhood. We get traffic patterns that may not be the ultimate ones with other roads, uh, being brought online. What I wanted to ask, though, is that, as you're looking at these maps, I think there's been board direction, and I know that with the installation of some of these subdivisions, there were speed bumps put in at locations where you could anticipate that they were arterials, uh, collect, you know, connecting with, uh, either Florin Road or Gerber Road, Bradshaw. And I'm gonna ask that we kind of re-up that effort, because when we look at the amount of money that we spend to do this, because it's important to neighborhoods, and we go through the process that we've, I think, refined, and again, kudos to, to our staff, uh, for the good work they do on this, you know, Neighborhood Transportation Management Program. I, I just, I think it's really important, particularly the area that's developing very quickly, and, you know, some of this is, you, you adjacent to areas in Supervisor Kennedy's district, that we actually, you know, make sure that we give a good, solid look at where those, because I know we got a request in now regarding one of the parks. I think there's another school going in, and with schools, it's a little different, because you kind of look at where those walk patterns are and so forth. But we ought to get some of these speed bumps and traffic diverters and roundabouts, if necessary, with stops. I know that's another concern. We have a roundabout that doesn't function as it should, and so now people want stop signs there. I'm gonna ask us to make sure that, as we look at those maps, somebody should be developer-installed. That way, you don't have to go through the process we go through here about who gets the speed bump, who doesn't, who wants it, who doesn't. It's there when that subdivision is built. It's a part of the landscape, and it functions as it should, uh, obviously with good traffic management. So, um, I guess I would just ask Lou that, you know, I don't know who reviews that in your shop, and if that's Matt or somebody else, but we need to make sure that we nail some, because we don't see those maps. A lot, you know, once we rezone an area, a lot of times those maps, we see the final subdivision map, so we don't get a chance to comment on it. So, we're leaving a lot to staff in that regard, and I know that you guys are diligent, but I would just ask that we, again, otherwise, we bear this expense and all the effort that goes into it, which is, you know, you know, good investment. On the other hand, we might be able to avoid it in some of these newly developing areas and get, uh, get ahead of it before people even move into those houses. So, I don't know if there's any comment, Reza or Lou, you have.
Yeah, but DOT already reviews development plans, and we are very mindful of the traffic calming, uh, features that need to be included in the initial plans, because it's cheaper and more effective.
Right.
And it makes sense to do it right from the beginning, rather than going back and trying to retrofit that. Uh, but I will, uh, make sure that, uh, we are even more focused on that, based on your comments.
Yeah, I just continue, continue to vigilance, because I, again, in some of these areas, you, you couldn't have anticipated all of what happens with traffic patterns. But I just, again, I, going in earlier is better in a lot of cases, so. Okay, that's all I comment I had. Thank you, Mr..
Thank you. Any others?
Thank you. Well, I'm going to make a motion to approve the staff recommendation, and, uh, Mr. Brady, I know you will, you're not happy with this, but the, one of the good things about speed bumps, I've found, is if they don't work, all it takes is a, you know, a, a backhoe or a tractor or something like that to go out and scoop them up if, uh, they continue to be a problem. So, let's try this. Um, I think staff also ought to probably take a look at the amount of traffic that's on it, even, we've had it, opinions on both ways. And, uh, then also, I'd like to know why it took two years to get here, but separately from this, so.
Second.
Question, a second, please, vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Next item.
The chair's microphone is gone. Our microphones are gone.
Hello?
Item 47 is the Highlands Market PCN, ABC license hearing to determine whether public convenience or necessity would be served by issuance of a type 20 liquor license to the Highlands Market located at 3667 Elkhorn Boulevard in the North Highlands community.
Thank you. At this time, chair's prerogative, I'm going to take a five-minute recess. In order to, we actually have a larger crowd turnout than we had anticipated. And so to have the meeting run in a way that is fair, transparent, and efficient, I'd like to see if I could take a five-minute recess, talk to both parties, and see how we can organize this in a way that makes sense. So first, I'll speak over to my left, your right, with the applicant. And then if there is organized representation on behalf of the opposition, if there are leaders that are considered leaders of the opposition, if you will, I'd like to speak with you as well and agree on some ground rules. So with that, we'll take a five-minute recess. And if we can, if I can meet with the applicant over here, that'd be great.
Okay, we will call back to order this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Clerk, please call the roll.
Supervisors Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
Serna.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you.
All right. Good afternoon, members of the board. I do have a brief PowerPoint presentation. This is the Highlands Market PCN. It is a request for public convenience and necessity to serve alcohol. The location is 3667 Elkhorn Boulevard, approximately 1,000, 1,000 feet east of the Watt Avenue-Elkhorn intersection in the North Highlands community. This is, the state issues the liquor license, but this is a hearing before the board to determine whether public convenience and necessity would be served for the issuance of a type 20 beer and wine license. The next graphic shows the census tracts and the one-mile radius of the area, showing that there are a number of establishments that currently sell alcohol in the area. The trigger for the PCN before the board is being in both an over-concentrated and high-crime reporting district. The census tract allows four licenses, and there are currently nine. And the board recently approved a grocery outlet PCN. There is also, within a one-mile radius, a total of 14 establishments, seven of which are for beer and wine, and seven for type 21. Many of those licenses are older licenses, and they do not have the same sorts of conditions that we put on new licenses. The North Highlands Community Planning Advisory Council met in June, and they recommended approval of this on a three-to-zero vote. On page four of the staff report, it does highlight that there were nine members of the public in attendance, five of which spoke in favor of the convenience store PCN. Staff ended up coming down on the side of recommending denial due to solely over-concentration in the area and a concern that it was not a full-service grocery store. The Sheriff's Department is willing to withdraw their opposition to the PCN with the recommended conditions. And the staff report is set up. Should you choose to approve this, the conditions are in the report. I would also note that the applicant has agreed to a 9:00 PM cutoff, which is earlier than you see on a lot of PCNs. And so we would move forward and put the conditions and typical business license conditions that are referenced in the staff report and in the attachments. And so with that, that concludes the staff presentation.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff of the board? Ms. Natoli.
Yes. Leanne, while you're up there, could you go back to the exhibit? It shows the one-mile radius, please.
Yes.
Where's the closest school? Because you have those large, those, you know, sites, some of those are commercial centers. I see a park. I assume it's a school side, too. It'd be, if you're looking at the map directly, it'd be up to the, to the right there, to, I guess, to the north, northeast. But do you know where?
I actually don't think that there's a school in the immediate vicinity. I know there are multifamily apartments immediately to the north. I would have to check with staff on the school locations.
Okay.
I'm not aware that there's a school in the very immediate vicinity.
Okay. The other question I had, then, and it was just briefly mentioned, you didn't mention your verbal report, but I know that in our briefings, it certainly touched on it in the staff report, and it's a bullet on page five. It talks about the North Highlands Environmental Justice Community. So that reference, as I talked with you yesterday, I know that we've been going through some planning efforts and so forth. Do we have, then, defined, adopted, community boundaries for environmental justice communities, then? And if so, is that, is there a map that we can see?
We have an adopted Phase One environmental justice document, and it does have defined boundaries of the community. That had came to the board, I forget how long ago, a year and a half ago or so. And so they are on Planning's website. We do have defined boundaries.
I remember when they came. I just didn't remember adopting specific maps. I mean, there was areas that were pointed to. We talked about factors, obviously, access to liquor or problems that might be incumbent with, you know, oversaturation and so forth. But I just didn't recall that we actually had an adopted map. So there's a map that takes into account the geographical area, the unincorporated area that actually has environmental justice communities as part of the document that came to us.
Yes. And you will be seeing a Phase Two for further discussion sometime in the next number of months.
Yeah, I know. We've had people speak to us. I know you've been working on it. I just, again, I was curious. All right. Thanks. That's all, Ms. Sturch.
Thank you. Any other questions at the board? All right. So here's what we're going to do. We're going to, first of all, I'm going to give you all an exercise. All of those who are here in support of the project, would you please stand at this time? Thank you very much. You may be seated. All of those who are in opposition, would you please stand at this time? Okay, so we are, thank you very much. We are keenly aware that there is interest on both sides. I'm going to have each, each side will have 30 minutes each to present. The applicant will go first, and then we will have the support. The applicant will have two minutes, followed by, and whatever questions the board has of any speaker, the board has the prerogative to cut in and ask at any time. We will do two minutes of the applicant, and then one minute for each speaker until we exhaust the 30 minutes. If you do not get a chance to speak, I apologize for that, but I guarantee you, by 30 minutes, we will have heard what you had to say. And then on the opposition, we will do the same. So at this time, I'd like to call for the applicant. And we will go until 3:30.
Good evening, or rather, afternoon. My name is John Seton. I'm the consultant for the applicant. Amy is the owner. I'll be brief. So quick description. Amy and her husband have owned numerous convenience markets throughout Sacramento and other counties for over 20 years, has never had a violation, no ABC or health-related violation. They've always been in compliance. They're opening up a new store. Actually, they opened it two years ago, and they're now seeking to add beer and wine to their operation. It's approximately 2,500 square feet. It's going to be a mini supermarket, offering pet food, prepackaged burritos, sandwiches, laundry items, a variety of sundry items, canned foods. The hours of operation will be 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, which, as you know, is quite strict when it comes to alcohol sales. Alcohol sales will be approximately 10% to 15%. They will use all the security necessary to prevent any problems in the area. They have surveillance cameras, ID scanners. There'll be a total of 13 surveillance cameras. There are no schools within 1,000 feet. And we have accepted the Sheriff's Department's conditions. ABC has approved the application pending PCN approval. CPAC was approved. We have 180 support signatures for the location. The question comes down to public convenience or necessity. There are over 500 residents that live directly behind the store. There's actually a walking path that leads right to Highlands Market, and some of those were the 180 support signatures. The grocery outlet was approved on August 6. The irony is that we actually submitted our application in January, which I believe was a couple months before they submitted theirs. So that was six or seven weeks ago that they were approved, and we're just now being heard. And we do not object to their issuance. We think competition is good. We think, even though it is over-concentrated, we will not be a problematic location. We're simply asking to be able to compete and to have an even playing field, so our business can succeed. If we don't get approved, I don't know how much longer it can be sustained. And if it becomes vacant, then obviously it could become a blight. And Lord, we have a support letter from the landlord as well indicating that.
If you can wrap up, if you can wrap up.
Oh, okay. Thank you. And then I can answer any questions or concerns.
I believe Supervisor Peters.
I have a question about your security cameras, which it looks like you have plenty of security cameras. Usually what we see in these is a statement that the tapes or recording is going to be kept for at least 30 days for the sheriff's review if necessary. Is that the kind of system you have, that you can keep it?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So the planning will capture that. That's the only question I have at the moment.
Okay. Thank you very much. First card we have.
Can I speak?
Oh, sorry. Yes.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Well, I am the business operator for this specific location, Highlands Market, for the last couple of years. I'm going to address the matter of crime first. As per the staff report, it mentions something about a 2017 crime report, and I believe, since we don't have anything to analyze, and we're not sure if that's even correlated to alcohol. Again, protection against crime and public nuisance, like John said, we have accepted the sheriff's conditions. We will be closing at 9:00 with the rest of the plaza, and we will not be selling anything under the size of a six-pack. I believe that the major nuisance and the, you know, it comes up with the deemed-approved licenses, the grandfathered ones that have been there for a while. They do not have any restrictions, and some of them are even open till 2:00 AM in the morning. So I believe the restrictions should be, I mean, there should be tougher guidelines on the grandfathered ones. When it comes to convenience, we are in a neighborhood that has, like John mentioned, about 500 families in the half-mile radius. Most of them, in fact, actually, all of them are on this side of the intersection where Watt and Elkhorn meet. And Watt is a very busy street to go across in order to get their little stuff.
If you can wrap up.
Sure. So when it, with Grocery Outlet, we're very happy that they're here. Most of the customers, you know, when they want to, we will be serving the same customers, but with different needs. Customers that would want to go for their weekly or every two-week grocery shopping will definitely go to Grocery Outlet. But when they come, when it comes to their everyday needs, it would be us. Dollar Tree, as from a customer perspective, if I was to want to go get beer, I would never think of going to a dollar store. They barely carry any beer anyways. And then we have a CPAC unanimous vote, where I'm the kind of applicant, I'm accessible to the county, to sheriff departments, and the community if there is any issue. I'm the kind of business operator that you want. And with that said, I would ask for your support and a yes to our request. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Hare, I will let you go over as well. As I said, just so you know, this is limited time, so the applause can eat into that time. So just be aware of that. We will start now with speaker slips that I have and those who've indicated support. Harjit Singh Gill. That's followed by Manvir Jomal.
Good afternoon. My name is Harjit, and yes, I support this license.
Thank you. And if everybody can follow that lead. Manvir Jomal? Gupri Gill, sorry. And I'm going to do my best with names. Some of the handwriting, I'm having difficulty with.
Good afternoon, guys. My name is Gupri Gill. I've been working this family business for like five years now. But for past couple of years, like, we can serve beer. We're losing bunch of sales, like, not just on beer. The customer just coming for beer, other stuff, too. People come for lotos, cigarettes, candy, and they're like, oh, we have no beer. They're going to leave everything. So we're losing sale on candy also, and other incidental sales. So I'll be like happy if you can get the beer licenses down there. I supported them very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Daniel Savala? Followed by Amit Othal.
I'll be quick. Good afternoon, supervisors. As you can tell from the size of the crowd in the room, we have a process that works, right? We have a CPAC hearing that Ms. Sudhu has gone through. We have a hearing today. We have leaders of opposition. You have, and obviously, people supporting here today. What we don't have historically is something to go after some of the older deemed operators. I think, does this work? What's, if you can tell, what's left out of that graph is some of the older deemed-approved licenses that are grandfathered, that don't have a lot of these restrictions that are being placed on this applicant. Through further investigation, you look at several of these deemed-approved licenses have violations, and they've also had histories of transfers, more than five for each of them. So you have a mechanism today that we frankly don't use. We have an opportunity, every time one of these licenses transferred, to have this same debate about should they stay or should they go. But we don't. The reason why cities and counties throughout California have adopted PCN special permits is exactly to protect communities like North Highlands, like parts of South Sacramento, from over-concentration and from operators who don't, frankly, don't have to play by the same rules as this operator does. So I came here originally today to talk, speak on the environmental justice piece, which I'm a huge supporter of. I just think it falls a little short in its scope. And I think if we take a look at specifics on this crime map, and we do things like we, we fund the sheriff's department and neighborhood code enforcement to really maybe use GIS and some historical data to make stronger cases for or against. Because on a case-by-case basis, when you use the system that we have in place, the rules, we get to have this discussion, and you get to make the decision, and you get better operators that way. So with that, I'd ask you for your support. Thank you very much.
Mr. Natoli.
Yeah, this is not so much for Dana, but maybe for Leanne and for Mr. Gill. I know when they came in and met with me, this came up about the deemed-approved. I had been, I guess, maybe the misunderstanding that when licenses were in place, even upon transfers, that we really didn't have the opportunity to weigh in. But if, in fact, we do, and we have operators that have violations, I know that we rely upon certainly the Planning Department, Sheriff's Department, to do the work on the PCNs. But it seems to me that the point being made here, and I guess what I would ask for is maybe a report back to this board, say, in 30 days, that could tell us what that landscape now looks like relative to the jurisdictional powers that are vested in counties and cities. It may require some additional dedication of resources. But I think, you know, we can all, I imagine every member of this board can speak to locations in our respective districts in the unincorporated area that we know have been problematic. If not, the sheriff certainly could tell us. But if we have a tool available to us, and we need to certainly be deliberative and prudent in the way we would utilize that for transfers, but, or for violations, obviously, ABC has most of the controlling mechanism here. I guess I would even look to county council to assist us in this regard, because until he came in and spoke with me here a couple of weeks ago, I didn't realize we actually, I knew we, we look at transfers, we get notice of those. But we actually have the ability through the county to weigh in with ABC. Maybe it's nothing that's new. But I would want to know that if we have another tool available to us, that we ought to, particularly invite this environmental justice and discussion that's going to follow on before this board. I'd like to know if we have that tool, because maybe we need to start utilizing it.
Good. We will do that.
Okay, thanks.
Amit Othal.
Good afternoon. My name is Amit Othal.
Could you speak into the microphones, please?
Yeah. Good afternoon.
Speak louder.
Good afternoon. My name is Amit Othal. I support this resolution, and I've been working with the family for about five years. I was the first one, actually, who started working there. And when it comes to business, because we don't have beer and wine, all we have is some tobacco and groceries. tobacco and groceries, we are losing a lot of business just because of that. And as the owners, people said that if we don't get the beer and wine license, this business may not be sustainable. So, and this place has been closed for over 10 years. We opened up, we put new plumbing and everything. It's like brand new now right now. So we put a lot of effort into this business, so we would expect your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Shi Sterling. Followed by Michael Mosley. And if you come down and line up, we'll make this even, we'll get even more people on.
All right. Yeah. Shai. My name is Shai Sterling and I approve of, support this decision.
Application. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mosley, followed by Paul Bonaglaski.
I support this store. There are a lot of older disabled people within blocks and it's not uncommon to see them walking down the street to these places. And this is extremely clean. I mean sidewalks, parking lot, unlike a few other places that are nearby. So I support it.
Thank you very much. Paul Bonaglaski. Followed by Corey Grundy.
Hi. I approve of the beer and wine license.
Thank you.
I approve of the beer and wine license. He does keep a clean establishment.
Thank you very much. Christopher Jones. Followed by Amelia, it looks like Renner.
I support them. You know, I need to get business in the neighborhood, so I support them.
Thank you. Amelia, followed by Melissa Maxey.
I'm Amelia and I support the Highlands Market.
Thank you very much. Melissa Maxey. Followed by Cindy Stevens.
Good afternoon. My name is Melissa Maxey and I do support North Highlands store for the beer and wine license. It's nice to be able to go conveniently to get that. So yes, thank you.
Thank you. Cindy, followed by Latoya Slaughter.
Hello. My name is Cindy Stevens. I do support them for their beer and wine license, but I'd like to start off by saying Boss Liquor, the liquor store across the street, had tricked a bunch of people into signing petitions against them to make it to where they couldn't and make it harder for them to get their license. They told me personally that it was a teacher, a teacher asked them to help sign petitions for a smoke shop to be opened up. And I got a letter in the mail and when I called, it was actually for Highlands Market not to get their liquor license. So I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. But when I do go for walks with my kids, it is easier to walk across that street versus Watt Avenue. So it's just a lot easier. And a lot of people walk in the neighborhood, so it's just safer and easier. So I'm in support of it. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you very much. Latoya, followed by Vincent Moore.
Good afternoon. My name's Latoya Slaughter. I support the Highlands Market. I prefer to go there over 7-Eleven. It's a lot, I guess, cleaner environment. There's not people hanging around there. So yeah, I support them.
You. Vincent, followed by Teri Ciancio.
How y'all doing? My name is Vincent Moore and I support this license.
Thank you, Vincent. Teri, followed by Joseph Lark.
Hi. My name is Teri Ciancio and I support the North Highlands liquor store.
Thank you very much. Joseph, followed by Dominique Ciancio.
Yeah, Joseph Lark. Yeah, I support that they should get their beer and wine license for North Highlands. They got a good little store going.
Thank you. Is Dominique here? Dominique. Dominique's followed by Darnell Gray.
I'm Dominique and I do support Highlands Market for the beer and wine license. There's no loitering and it's very clean. Thank you.
Darnell Gray and then Sandra Turley? Sandra Turley?
Hello. I'm Darnell Gray. I support Highlands Market to have their beer and wine license. Know them as some good people, conduct good business, stay on top of their game.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Sandra Turley and I support North Highlands Market for beer and wine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brandy. And Brandy will be followed by Gina Garcia.
Hi. My name is Brandy Coole and I support North Highlands Market.
Thank you. Gina Garcia, followed by Elliot Greenbaugh.
I'm Gina Garcia and I support the Highlands Market. It's close.
Thank you. Elliot, are you here or is it Emily? There's both.
Elliot.
Okay. And then Clarissa Losi.
Hi. My name is Elliot Greenhenge and I support the Highlands Market. It's a very clean place and great to walk to. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Clarissa. And Clarissa's followed by Petra Britt.
Hi. My name is Clarissa Losi and I too support the Highlands Market.
Thank you very much. Gregory Webb will be next.
Hi. I'm Petra Britt and I support Highlands Market as well.
Thank you, Petra. And after Gregory will be Adrian McCraft Jr.
Hi. I'm Gregory Webb and I support Highlands Market.
Thank you, Gregory. Adrian, and after Adrian will be Emiko. Help me.
How y'all doing today? Good. My name is... Highlands, man, it's a lot of crazy stuff that go on out there. You feel me? They got a nice, clean, respected, they don't do the craziness. They have cameras in there and a respected environment. You feel me? Like that plaza's been there forever and it ain't going nowhere. If they could set up there, I'm sure they'll be there for a long time to come. Got to be up.
Thank you, Adrian. Emiko McQueen.
Hi. I'm Emiko McQueen and I support the approval of beer and wine.
Thanks. Thank you. Indy Cali, followed by Guri Kang.
I'm actually in the American role, not in the sequeural today. I don't have the attire. That's why you guys didn't recognize me.
All the same, it's a big tap.
Hello, Don.
Hello, Evie.
You've heard most of the people here, the issues on pre-existing stores. We've gone through those before. Grandfather stores get a lot of privileges. They get passed over when they're coming for transfer or something. I think, like Don wants to address, we need to look at that in the future as well. Right now, I think we've heard of everybody who uses this store. It's a clean store. It's well-run. Those are the type of businesses we need in the county and if we support them as opposed to the bad guys, we will do better and we will encourage better businesses. As a county, we need them. These people have been running businesses over here for 20 years. They have others. They have a legacy. They have a history and I think they need to be supported on that. So I stand with the rest of the people who came in and said they support it and I trust you guys will. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Guri Kang. Guri Kang, thank you. Followed by Christopher Jones.
Hi. My name is Guri Kang. I'm not here behalf of any associations, me myself, and I know the family for 30 years. Live in Sacramento County, myself, and now I live in Placer County, but I came here to support them. They're good people and they have a track record, no violations, health department, ABC, and most of you guys probably have seen me here plenty of times before and I'd like to see if you guys can put up the license. I should give them a license with full license. No conditions, but that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Christopher Jones. Come on down.
Already went.
Oh, you did, I'm sorry.
She votes twice.
Brian Gallo. Followed by George.
I'm in full support of their liquor license.
Thank you. George, and your last name starts with P. Okay, there we go. Thank you very much. And then Michael Malone.
Hello. I'm George Pavoni and I support the Highlands Market.
Thank you. Michael Malone, followed by Rubal Singh.
Hello. My name is Michael Malone and I support Highlands Market.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Rubal Singh, followed by Harjit Singh.
My name is Rubal Singh and I support this license.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Harjit Singh Kara. We learned from staff report that a county is currently working on a new process for reviewing a PCN. I'm here to extend myself and until county complete work on new ordinance, I urge to support this applicant who has met all the requirements. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jaswinder Shurgill. Followed by Tarsim Singh. Y'all are doing great.
My name is Jaswinder Shurgill and I support this bill.
Thank you very much. Is Tarsim Singh here? Nope. Okay. Ranjit Gill?
Hello.
Amonpreet Cindy or Singh? I can't tell. No? Ramnik Kaur? Amson Lali? Was that even close? Okay? Okay. Didn't get to hear me butcher his name. That's good. Prabdeet Sindhu?
Okay, thank you. So my name is Prabdeet Sudhu. I'm a full-time medical student in Elgrove, California, and I work at our family-owned business when I do find time, which is sometimes pretty rare nowadays, but I'm in favor of this licensure because I think it'll positively impact the surrounding community. I know that may sound counterintuitive, but allowing local consumers an opportunity to purchase beer and wine closer to their homes decreases the visibility of these products. Like as many people mentioned, there's a walkway directly going back to a bunch of condominiums. We don't want these products visible to our children especially. I know you've mentioned the notion about schools. Furthermore, this allows the people who are living adjacent to the market to, like I said, walk and purchase these beverages, which would ultimately decrease the likelihood of drinking and driving as well. Economically, this licensure allows small businesses like ours to stay alive and compete with the larger corporations of the world and also competing businesses nearby. Also, competition and free market is the basis of this country's foundation. Therefore, giving a consumer a choice is beneficial in preventing local monopolies and maintaining this consumer-driven open market that we have. All in all, I think this is a safer, more fair and convenient way for consumers to enjoy these beverages. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Tina Gans.
I support Highlands Market. They always treated us like family.
Great. Thank you very much. Now, this one, I apologize. Do the best I can. Kamju Singh.
Hi. I'm Kamju Singh and I support this market to get the beer and wine license. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Amon Baines? Was that close? No? Amon Baines? Benny Bali? Thank you.
Hello. My name is Benny and I support Highlands Market again, beer and wine.
Thank you, Benny. Amy Sidhu.
Hi. I'm already spoken.
Okay, thank you. John Acevito. Followed by Kate Harmon.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. My name is John Acevito and I support the license for Highlands Market. I live across the street. It's convenient for me. I don't know anything about the oversaturation or I just know that next to Boss Liquor, these guys are a little bit closer to me and so I support it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kate Harmon. Followed by Melissa Torres.
Hi. My name is Kate and I support the Highlands Market for beer and wine.
Thank you, Kate. Melissa Torres, followed by Melissa Maxey.
Hi. My name is Melissa and I support the Highlands Market. I live across the street. Super convenient.
And Melissa already, the other Melissa already went. Amelia Perez?
I went already.
Okay. She's been already. Carol Mays? Is that right?
How y'all doing? I support Highlands Market to get their beer and wine license. I work at the big lots in the city trans, so for me to get off work, it's more convenient to go to Highlands Market and just grab my little snacks, my swishers and maybe a beer, you know? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Don't encourage that, but thank you. Sharon Singh? Yes? No? Can I get a second opinion from one of my colleagues so I don't?
Got me.
Okay. Sharon Singh? Is that close?
Sharon S.
Okay. Is there anybody speaking in support that for some reason I missed or read you wrong? Come on down. And then while she's coming down, I want everybody to give yourself a big hand because...
Yeah.
You did great.
I support the North Highlands store because I think it's convenient for me to have, walk there instead of having to get a ride to Winko because I don't drive. So the people there are really friendly. I've been going there for about two years now. I never have any issues there and it's not really crowded too much. I guess it's because of that, but I support it because I would like to get my wine there instead of having to go to Winko and drive in my car. So because of the walking distance, I think it's convenient. I support it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Thank you very much for everybody who has spoken thus far and I appreciate the brevity. We are listening. First up is Robert Hare, speaking in opposition. And Mr. Hare, I let time go over a bit, so I'm going to give you three minutes. Thank you. Afternoon, Supervisors. Afternoon, Robert.
I'm here to oppose this based on the public necessity or convenience just does not exist. I agree with the Office of Planning and Environmental Review to deny this request for a letter of PC or N. The fact is that crime rate in North Highlands is 77% higher than the national average. The fact is there's a direct correlation between violent crime and the concentration of licenses. There's many studies that have been conducted that prove this. The fact is there's no public convenience factor that exists. 20 feet from this establishment is a Dollar Tree with a beer and wine license. Another 50 feet, a grocery store is coming with a beer and wine license. In the same shopping center is a 7-Eleven with a beer and wine license that provides these snacks and knickknacks. It's a fact. You've got your chance.
Excuse me. You know, everybody was very polite for the first 30 minutes. Let's continue.
It's a fact that it's already very high concentration. Not just very high, overly saturated. It's already been pointed out by the ABC study and the Office of Planning and Environmental Review. So there's no necessity. Adding an additional license has no merit based on PC or N and it's a common sense decision. Yesterday, when I read the request by the applicant and about the PCN letter that they wrote, I was reading through it and I realized, yes, PCN doesn't, clearly doesn't exist here, but also it kind of irked me because I read verbiage like responsible retailing, comfortable
Hi, I'm Kamju Singh, and I support this market to get the beer and wine license. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Amon Baines? Was that close? No? Amon Baines? Benny Bali? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Benny, and I support Highlands Market again, beer and wine.
Thank you, Benny. Amy Sidhu? Okay, thank you. John Asavido? Followed by Kate Harmon.
Good afternoon supervisors, my name is John Asavido, and I support the license for Highlands Market. I live across the street, it's convenient for me. I don't know anything about the oversaturation, or I just know that next to Boss Lurk, these guys are a little bit closer to me. And so I support it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Kate Harmon? Followed by Melissa Torres.
Hi, my name is Kate, and I support the Highlands Market for beer and wine.
Thank you, Kate. Melissa Torres, followed by Melissa Maxi.
Hi, my name is Melissa, and I support the Highlands Market. I live across the street, super convenient.
And Melissa already, the other Melissa already went. Amelia Perez? Okay. She's been already. Carol Mays? Is that right?
How y'all doing? Um, I support Highlands Market to get their beer and wine license. I work at the big lots in the city trends. So for me to get off work, it's more convenient to go to Highlands Market and just grab my little snacks, my swishers and maybe a beer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Don't encourage that, but thank you. Sharon, is it Sharon Singh? Yes, no? Can I get a second opinion from one of my colleagues, so I don't?
Got me.
Okay. Sharon Singh, is that close?
Sharon S.
Okay, is there anybody speaking in support that for some reason I missed, or read you wrong? Come on down. And then while she's coming down, I want everybody to give yourself a big hand, because... You did great.
I support the North Highlands store because I think it's convenient for me to have, walk there instead of having to get a ride to Winko because I don't drive. So the people there are really friendly. I've been going there for about two years now. I never have any issues there, and it's not really crowded too much. I guess it's because of that, but I support it because I would like to get my wine there instead of having to go to Winko and drive in my car. So because of the walking distance, I think it's convenient. I support it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm Delsey, and I support it.
Thank you very much. All right, thank you very much for everybody who has spoken thus far, and I appreciate the brevity. We are listening. First up is Robert Hare, speaking in opposition. And Mr. Hare, I let time go over a bit, so I'm going to give you three minutes.
Afternoon supervisors.
Afternoon, Robert. I'm here to oppose this based on the public necessity or convenience just does not exist. I agree with the Office of Planning and Environmental Review to deny this request for a letter of PC or N. The fact is that crime rate in North Highlands is 77% higher than the national average. The fact is, there's a direct correlation between violent crime and the concentration of licenses. There's many studies that have been conducted that prove this. The fact is, there's no public convenience factor that exists. 20 feet from this establishment is a Dollar Tree with a beer and wine license. Another 50 feet, a grocery store is coming with a beer and wine license. In the same shopping center is a 7-Eleven with a beer and wine license that provides these snacks and knickknacks. It's a fact. You got your chance.
Excuse me, you know, everybody was very polite for the first 30 minutes, let's continue.
It's a fact that it's already very high concentration. Not just very high, overly saturated. It's already been pointed out by the ABC study and the Office of Planning and Environmental Review. So there's no necessity. Adding an additional license has no merit based on PC or N, and it's a common sense decision. Yesterday, when I read the request by the applicant and about the PC and N letter that they wrote, I was reading through it, and I realized, yes, PC and N doesn't, clearly doesn't exist here. But also, it kind of irked me because I read verbiage like "responsible retailing", "comfortable experience", "positive ongoing neighborhood relationship", "sensitive", "green business". Board members, it's a fact that for the last year and a half, that Highlands Market that has been in business, just maybe five months ago, they pulled their crack pipes, their glass bongs, their glass, you know, smoke-related items, oil burners. But yet, they had an epiphany and felt, maybe we should sell beer and wine in a oversaturated area because it's a necessity. So maybe we can feel more responsible, comfortable, show the community we're positive, and we have an ongoing neighborhood relationship, and we're sensitive. Members, this is a common sense decision. Think, when you make this decision, think about the community, think about the school that's nearby, which is less than a quarter mile away, which was, they forgot to mention. It's a hops, skip away, there's a fire department next door, there's a community center less than a quarter mile away, there is a halfway house less than a quarter mile away. And if we delve even deeper into this and go a half a while, there's plenty of schools in the area. Just make the common sense decision. There is no PC and or N here in this situation.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
I remind you, you're cutting into your own time. Mr. Natoli?
Yeah, Ms. Chair, when we're done with the testimony, I'd like the applicant, in light of the comment that was made a moment ago by the speaker about paraphernalia that they carried in their store, you know, when I met with you, there was no disclosure of that. It may not be there any longer, but I would like to have some response to that, not now, but when we're all done with the testimony, so I'd like to know about that.
And in addition to that, I'd like to know too whether or not there's any history of high-volume sales of butane.
Thank you. Sergio? Thank you. Followed by Christian Cortez.
Good evening, this is Sergio Cortez. I oppose it because, like he said, there is a lot of liquor and licenses already in the area, and just adding more is just going to add more things to it. So I oppose it.
Thank you. Christian Cortez?
Hi, yes, like he just said, that there is, you know, there's a school nearby, and I have kids of my own. And for them to, you know, be outside playing in the front yard and when I happen to see, you know, some homeless person walking by, you know, drunk from, you know, beer that they purchased at that already oversaturated area with liquor licenses, you know, it's just, it's not right, and I just, I oppose the approval of this.
Thank you very much, Christian. Suk Rantawa? Followed by Matt Horton?
Hello council members, my name is Suk Rantawa. I'm a business owner on Wad Avenue. I'm here to oppose this and respectfully ask for your no vote just in the point of the oversaturation of existing liquor licenses. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Matt Horton? Matt, are you here? Okay. Terry Baker? Followed by Alicia Tabanico.
Good afternoon, district supervisors. Now that we're done with the paid testimonies, I love convenience as much as the next person does, but where's that in? I've been born and raised in North Highlands, and I'm opposed to a liquor store license for the following reasons. First, there's a number of liquor stores in the immediate area. Anybody could walk across the street or in the same parking lot to get liquor, beer, or wine, as long as there are swishers or knickknacks. It's definitely an overcompensated area over there with schools in the same district area. There's a 7-Eleven. There was also a bar that was previously shut down in that same location that was established right in front of the North Highlands Market a number of years ago that now turned into a Pizza Hut, probably around the same time that North Highlands was stopped selling liquor over there. Everyone walks up and say they support this, but why? If it's a safety concern, why not stop before you get home? Why take your family out for a walk to the liquor store? Why not stop at a store anywhere on the way home?
Thank you.
All right, that's all I got to say.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Alicia Tabanico? And Raji Dillon after that?
Hello, I oppose simply because I would like to prevent high crime rates, as well as I know they talked a lot about the grandfather liquor stores that have had their license for a while. And I just don't see why there's a need for the neighborhood to have another, another store that would sell liquor. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelvin Dillon?
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Raji, and I just want to say, I don't think there's any need, simply no need for another liquor store. There's schools nearby, and then there's, we have young children. There's just simply no need for it, and I oppose it. Thank you.
Thank you, Raji. Kelvin, followed by Ingaborg Dawkins?
Good morning supervisors, my name is Kelvin Dillon. I'm currently employed for the Santa Clara Sheriff's Department, so my main concern here is public safety. The increase of liquor licenses is only going to cause more criminal activity, such as loitering. With loitering, you're going to have more drug sales. Drug sales, you've got minors coming to these stores. You're going to have, encouraging these kids to, well, I shouldn't say encourage, but easier access for alcohol. And with that being said, you're going to have more drunk drivers. At the end of the day, my main concern, public safety, and this is, so my, I'm here to oppose.
Thank you very much. Ingaborg Dawkins? Followed by Tiffany Segura.
Hi.
Hi.
I just heard about this yesterday at the Dollar Tree store while I was shopping with my granddaughter. And right now, I'm very comfortable walking from DeeDee's up to the Dollar Tree store with my grandchildren because there's hardly any alcohol in this street. And I really pray to God that you guys decide no on this because it's for the best interest of our elderly, which is me, and our younger children. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tiffany? Paul Johal? Carmen Cortez? We got the whole Cortez thing going over here.
My name is Carmen Cortez, and I oppose because I believe that that it would be less safe for our kids in the schools nearby. Thank you.
Thank you. Preet Hare? Followed by Nick Chistow?
Hi, my name's Preet. I oppose this because we have children, school in there, we have enough liquor stores ready. I'd rather I see something else that would help our community instead of doing this. So thanks, I oppose it.
Thank you very much. Nick? Followed by Michael Peterson?
Good afternoon. Nick Chistow, I oppose this proposition strictly, mainly because I just hear convenience seems to be the biggest argument for everybody. I think you guys saw the slide with the liquor licenses and everything that's in the area. If that's not convenient, or across the street isn't convenient or whatnot, then I don't, you know, it's, I don't know, I think that's something we need to look at because at the end of the day, there's more negative, I think, coming than positive. Also, I mean, if future businesses, only thing that's going to keep them going, you know, is beer sales in their store, then, you know, the area, I think, may be in more trouble than we think. So I definitely oppose this.
Great, thank you very much. Michael Peterson? Followed by Josh Lopez, I believe?
This is Michael Peterson, I'm here in my opposition of the approval of the beer and wine license. I think enough is enough. You know, if you look at the market the way it is already, these statutes were put in for a reason, you know, the number that they are going to allow. And we're already, it seems like it's already maxed and exceeded that. So do we really need another one? I don't think so. I hope you vote no.
Thank you. Josh? Followed by Sunny Gill?
My name is Josh Lopez, and I oppose it because I think we have more than enough in the area already.
Thank you. Sunny Gill?
My name is Sunny Gill. I oppose due to the fact that we have an oversaturated area, and we're increasing the risk of minors being able to get their hands on alcohol.
Thank you. Is there a Brian, is it Neverett? Brian, last name, oh, here we go. Thank you. Apologize.
It's always butchered.
Yeah, I definitely oppose because, like, why add fuel to the fire? There's already enough crime. You don't add more alcohol to crime-ridden areas. Thanks.
Thank you. Jeka Atoa? No? Kuldeep Singh? Followed by Riley McCracken?
Hello, hi. My name is Kuldeep Singh. I oppose, we don't need anything over there anymore, you know, beer or wine, because I already have three over there. And more crime in North Highland than other sides. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Riley? Followed by Dakota Heathcock?
Hi, my name is Riley McCracken, and I oppose this because I think that there's too many liquor stores already in the area, and there's so many schools all in the area. And to keep all that liquor away, and I travel by the school over there, and there's like always a lot of beer cans and homeless people in the alleyways that I travel through with my daughter to take her to preschool. And I think that you guys should oppose it because it's bad.
Thank you very much. Dakota? Followed by Chris DePaul?
Hi, my name is Dakota Heathcock, and there is an elementary school, it's named Village. I went there, and there's a lot of homeless people that are always intoxicated. My daughter will be going there next year, and I don't feel like it needs more alcohol in that area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chris DePaul? And after Chris is Darren.
Good afternoon, councils. I oppose based on three bullet points: high crime rate, high concentration of liquor stores, which is about 14, and I don't think add any convenience to the residents over there. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Darren? And Darren will be followed by Dave Singh? Or maybe Davy?
Hey council members, I'm actually a business owner on Wad Avenue also. Feel like there's more than enough beer and wine licenses already in that one plaza. I don't think the fourth is necessary. I think they can come to either one of those locations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dave, Davy, or Davy? Same. Okay. Carol Mays? Or Correll Mays? Correll here? And first name starts with R, middle name is Raymond, and Myers is the last name.
Yeah, my name is Raymond. My father was a shield. He served this place a long time. And when he retired, he always wanted to get out of here. It was getting worse and worse, and, you know, I'm stuck selling, you know, my property. I'm leaving town. This place ain't getting better. It doesn't really need a liquor store. There's bottles and bottles sitting in all these stores. Be the judge.
Thank you very much. Okay, that is all of the speakers I have to speak in opposition. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak in opposition? There is still time. Yes, sir, come on down one at a time. I do have a few cards that did not state whether or not, so it's maybe, you know, one of you.
My name's Christopher Main, and I oppose. Oh, you got it?
Yeah.
All right, thank you, sir.
Are you in opposition?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Dakota Sadie, and I'm against it.
Got it, thank you. Francisca Ariola?
I don't know how mine got mixed up with theirs, but I already spoke and I already said everyone.
Okay, thank you. Delsey? All right. And Biklamajit, I don't know. Biklamajit? Anything close to that? Last name starts with an S? All right. That is all the cards of...
I'm sorry, I think I missed my name.
Sorry.
But I'm here to oppose it. I don't think we need another liquor store in the area. There's already a 7-Eleven. There's plenty of places, there's no need, there's no necessity. It's just going to, you know, there's an elementary school right down the street. There's absolutely no need for another liquor store.
Thank you for coming, thank you. Yes, sir.
If we still have time, can I...
You have time. And you have a minute.
Also, this area is real troubled with homeless people, so adding another liquor store is just going to be expanding the area that we're going to have troubled people coming to get little, little bottles of beer and whatnot. And like you said, there is schools in the area, and like, it's just going to cause more, more problems over in that area, so...
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, that's all the cards that I have from the public, and I don't see any more hands. So with that, I want to say again, thank you very much for the way that you respectfully handled the situation. And with that, we'll bring it back to the board for board questions. I do know that Supervisor Natoli and Supervisor Serna already had a question in. If you want to start with Supervisor Natoli's question?
Yeah. Right.
Okay. Would the applicant like to come forward with a two-minute response?
So in response to the paraphernalia, I don't know what he was talking about. We did sell tobacco pipes, and we were duly licensed to do so. Yes, a few months ago, actually last year, we decided to remove those. And I felt that, you know, we would want to carry beer and wine. I would, and also address the issue of homeless people. That is not true, that's absolutely wrong. We have round-the-clock security by the landlord, and if you can look at the paperwork that I handed, there's a letter from the landlord as well. So any other questions, I'm willing to answer.
So I had the question about high-volume sales of butane. Do you offer high-volume sales of butane?
I don't think our percentage is very low. We probably sell maybe one box in a couple months.
Okay, but you do sell it.
I believe so. Let me check with the manager to make sure. He is one of the employees at the store.
We used to sell the butane, but like about five, six months, we stopped doing that. We're not selling, and we used to sell like a one box a month. That's what we all, now it's like about five, six months. I'm the permanent cashier over there, so not anymore. No butane.
Thank you.
To clarify that, so is the answer, you don't sell it at all, or you just have it sold?
No, right now, no, not anymore.
Right now, what about going forward?
Since we removed the, like, glasses, like, pipes, so not anymore.
I think his question is moving forward, absolutely no.
Okay, thank you.
Now, I'm going to draw, again, I don't know if it's a fair correlation, if I could, but, so you withdrew the pipes. You said they were for tobacco pipes because you couldn't sell them for anything that would be legitimate for any other reason, but... And you said the same time you suspended the sales of paraphernalia, that you were suspended the sales of butane.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
I heard that, so what prompted you to do that?
I believe initially, we started it just to be sustainable, and then we realized we'd rather do a convenience store without those, when I realized, because I have not owned a smoke shop in the past. I'd rather have a full-line convenience store rather than carry stuff like that.
So you were licensed smoke shop?
Yes, we were.
You surrendered that license now?
Oh, in order to sell cigarettes, we do have to have our tobacco license, which we still do.
Okay. There were some pictures that were submitted too. I assume this came with the letter, and then we had pictures of cases that have beer. This is what you hope to have, is that what that is?
This is a picture from my existing store in Citrus Heights. And if Supervisor Frost could recall, this was a few years back, and she was one of the council members that approved it. And since then, we've run a very successful and efficient business with zero violations in the city of Citrus Heights.
Okay, so let me just go back to, again, because it caught my attention. Again, you came in and met with me, Amy, along with your representatives, your representative. And again, you can't dictate how paraphernalia is used. Obviously, it's not illegal to sell... Obviously, it's not illegal to sell.
Yes, when I realized that, I...
But that's why, yeah, I want to have some understanding about that because, again, you know, as you portray your business and you've portrayed it certainly verbally in your representation to me, I want to have an understanding about that.
Correct.
Again, and so you said you entered that in line of business to be sustainable and then...
I believe the goal was, it was just supposed to be for tobacco usage.
Right, I understand.
And that was my perception, yes.
Okay, and you learned otherwise?
Yes, I did.
That people might use it for other purposes? Is that a condition that, should we entertain approving this? I don't know if this one we put on in the past, but a condition that I think to Mr. Serna's question too about, you know, butane, it's not illegal to have butane if you use it properly. But we know people use it for, you know, illicit activities and...
Yeah, sometimes you learn, you know, life is a learning process. But then also your question about moving forward, I learned that as well. ABC license does not allow any of those items, so that will be a no-no.
And then one last question just for you, Amy. I guess it was kind of split, the split hairs a little bit finely, but there, when I asked about schools and then your representative, when he spoke, he said, well, there's no schools within 1,000 feet, but then if it's within a quarter mile, that puts it within 1,100 feet. So what is the distance? And again, you don't have to respond. I guess staff could tell me. There are two elementaries that I understand is Sierra View and Phillips elementaries that are within approximate area. Could you tell me what distance those are?
Yeah, there is an elementary school, we estimate 1,600 to 1,800 feet to the east. And another school a little bit further to the south.
There's one to the north.
Along Watt Avenue.
One to the north. School?
The north. I don't know about the one to the north. The closest one is the one to the east down Elkhorn Boulevard at Larchmont.
Okay. Well, while you're looking at the...
And there's Sierra View, which is, you're right, to the north.
Yes.
It's, you're right. It is about the same distance, probably in that 1,600 to 1,800 feet. It's north of...
Directly north of the market.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Of the shopping center.
Yeah.
Just one other question and it was in some of the data, but so for the licenses within the center for Dollar Tree Grocery Outlet and 7-Eleven, if those are the three that are the other ones within the center, some within the same building, but within the center. Are all those licenses restricted?
None of them are as far as I know.
Well, Grocery Outlet just came through, they better have some restrictions on them.
Grocery Outlet will have restrictions. I do not believe that the other ones have restrictions.
And have there been violations noted for those locations?
I don't know if we went through with the sheriff and researched the violations on those, since we weren't looking at those.
Okay. I don't think we looked at that. Daniel raised the issue, but I just was curious, so.
I don't think I have information.
Obviously, Ms. Peters keeps track of a lot of this in her dish. I just, I'm curious because, again, we've had, you know, very contrary opinions about what we ought to do here today and I'm just trying to get a little more information behind that, so. Okay, thanks. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Supervisor Frost?
So I just wanted to comment because Amy had mentioned that I have knowledge of her and her family and their business practice over time. And I can testify based on my experience on the city council and as mayor of Citrus Heights that the Sidhu family has been an exceptional actor. They, we've never had, we never had any problems with their market. It's clean and they have always run a good business. And I also, I wanted to ask, are, do you already have the cameras and these conditions that the sheriff has listed, that you, we have listed in the application? Are all those in place?
Yes, the cameras have been in place for the last two years. Like I said, there is no homeless issue over there. And I, and I don't know where the homeless issue is coming from, but there is security cameras. They've been in place for the last two years already.
And do you have, have you had crime in your location?
Zero crime. Zero crime last year.
You haven't had robberies or...
No. No, zero.
Loitering with homeless people, loitering around your property?
No, not at all, because we do have 24-hour security by the landlord.
So the whole shopping center has?
Yes, it's the, it's not the full shopping center per se, it's the one ownership. 7-Eleven falls in under different ownership, yes.
Okay, that's all for now.
Thank you.
Supervisor Serna?
Thank you. Question for staff. Is it the case that there's currently a vacant, a large vacant lot immediately east of the market still?
Yes, there is.
Okay. What's it zoned for?
I don't know if I have a zoning map. Let me see if staff can get me that in a minute. We're getting that right now.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of the board?
I do want to correct. Staff did inform me that the Dollar Tree PCN does have restrictions. So that one came through somewhat more recently and has restrictions.
7-Eleven's not restricted?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Are there any other questions of the applicant?
No questions by me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Then we, we'll bring it back to the board.
Were you gonna be able to get that answer from Mr. Serna?
I'm talking slowly.
Waiting with bated breath, yes. Yeah, it may take a couple minutes to get the zoning. We didn't bring a zoning map down with us and it's not on my phone, so I apologize.
I wouldn't otherwise be so interested, but it does lie on the far, the market lies on the far eastern edge of the shopping center.
You want to understand if it's residential or commercial?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, let's take a five-minute break.
Sorry. Zoning map.
We're ready to answer the question.
Come back to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Still here.
Peters.
Here.
Serna.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Ms. Moffett. All right, thank you. Apologize for the delay. It's in a special planning area, so we had to go in and look at the underlying zoning, which is shopping center commercial. So most likely commercial, although I do need to note, is it also possible to do apartments in some of the commercial zones?
So it is possible that in the future, we might have these chambers full of people yet again for a brand-new retail convenience outlet that wants to sell alcohol. That's a possibility.
Yeah, it's predominantly zoned for commercial retail, yes.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? I will take one more comment. Please make it brief.
I would just like the board to know that most of the opposition and the leader is from Boss Liquor, which is on the other side of Watt Avenue. And I just want you guys to keep in mind that -- remind you that competition is good, and competition is good for the public, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank -- no, it's -- no, 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 no. You were doing so well. Ms. Moffett, anything else to add? Otherwise, Ms. Peters?
I don't have anything else to add.
Okay. Ms. Peters.
Thank you. If no one else has any comments, first of all, I have to say, been on the Board of Supervisors 15 years, and I've never seen this many people from North Highlands in the board chambers, so obviously it's a subject of great interest. My opinion about this has been swayed by the history of the operator and by the facts as I see them. The operator has a very good reputation. She has several other stores. She even has a reference from her landlord as a good tenant that has no crime problems, rent on time, you know, ideal tenant. So that means something to me. And it is where this store is located is in a center that has normal crime levels. It doesn't have anything unusual because of the liquor licenses in the center. This is a beer and wine license with conditions, which is something we have been striving for at the county for about, I don't know, 10 years since we really determined that it was plain liquor stores that we had most of the problems with. The -- not only are the sales restricted from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., which is very unusual. The store closes at 9:00. There'll be no sales of liquor after 9:00. And before that, there are no single sales, so a kid can't come in and buy a beer. It doesn't sell hard alcohol, so none of those little three-ounce bottles of alcohol. The thing about -- well, so in the staff report, it states that the applicant has met their conditions, and they approve if the conditions were accepted, and the applicant accepted them. And as I mentioned earlier, I want to make sure it's noted under conditions that, should it pass, that the cameras would be required to hold their videos for 30 days and make them available to the sheriff's department if asked. The CPAC had a unanimous yes. And this is, in fact, only five people came, and they were all in favor of the license. I want to point out, it's not just an alcohol store. Again, it's not a liquor store. There's food there, too. There are snacks, but there's also fresh food in the store. And then I wanted to mention, as I -- LeAnn, since you're planning director, as I mentioned, to Manny, who is handling these issues, although I understand he has quite a few people in training, that I think the staff report is lacking appropriate detail on the sheriff's requirement. There's a letter as an attachment, but I think you need to have a subheading on these PCNs that says sheriff's requirements, and put them all in the staff report so that someone in the future can look back and see everything that was required. I'm not sure they always would look to an attachment. And I also think when you have an operator with a history, that it's appropriate to discuss that. Is it the first store? Is it the fifth store? And what do the neighbors on those other stores have to say? And along the same line with the liquor license, I also want to point out that we've been on and off at the business of trying to put an appropriate process in place for liquor licenses so that it's clear to applicants what is required. It is a very difficult application because the state has requirements, the county has requirements. They don't always match. I think it's very -- then you've got the neighbors and crime levels, and I think all of those things need to be put forth in a new revised ordinance, and I think we need to get on it. So given all those facts, I would like to move approval of this license with the addition of the cameras, as I mentioned earlier. So I would move to approve the letter of public convenience.
Second.
For a type 20.
Second.
Can I clarify on the cameras, this LeAnn here? We would intend to put that on the business license conditions, and that would be condition number seven, which you're not adopting today, but staff would commit to do it.
But for the staff report, too, it needs to be in both places.
Okay.
We do have a motion and a second, but we also have supervisor wants to speak. Supervisor Natoli?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Chair. Certainly appreciate the comments and the motion made by my colleague, Supervisor Peters. I want to just speak to a couple of things here that I think this application really, in addition to some of the comments that Susan brought forward, that should be included in the staff report, from here on out, I think that the radius map shows parks, but we need to know where schools and daycare centers are in proximity to facilities and that are requesting, you know, whatever the type of license that they're trying to request. And I think, you know, that to me is a consideration, and you know, again, there's no magic distance, but nonetheless, I think that's, you know, we had a number of people who commented about walking to and from. Then, you know, I trust that when they're walking, they have children with them as well. So that's a point for the next time we have a staff report. And I think also, this discussion we had this afternoon, which I think was illuminating in the sense that if we have licenses that are, you know, deemed approved or whatever that notation was, is that if that's another subset, then I'd like, you know, at least us member as we consider these in the future, that we have that information available to us. And I guess that would be the sheriff's requirement. I don't think it's necessarily you, LeAnn, that would have to bring that forward. I would just also say that, you know, this is a little bit closer call for me. I had a chance. I met with the applicant here, and again, I don't question anybody that comes before us about where they live or where they work. I'm not so sure that that last comment, Amy, you felt it was important to point that out. We didn't ask if that was your manager or if that was one of your employees. Some of them self-identified. I think that people, you know, what is good here today, and I think Supervisor Peters spoke to it, that we have folks that have come out from, you know, from a community that oftentimes isn't represented here in these chambers, and they came here on this specific issue. And I think it's important because I think this is the process that we utilize to make determinations that affect all the people in this audience, whether you live there, you work there, you own a business, or whether you travel through. And I would just hate to see that as being, you know, kind of one of the markers that, you know, your comment is somehow diminished because you either support the applicant in this case, or you oppose what the applicant bring forward. All that commentary was relevant, and I make this comment because I think I feel very strongly that as one of the five that's elected in this county to make those decisions, we're not checking your credentials at the door to ask you where you come from to make comments here. And so I want people to feel, whatever decision we make, that they don't feel discouraged because, well, I went down there to the board, and either they approved or disapproved it, but then they, you know, they were telling me, well, I worked there, I own this business. It's information that certainly can inform us. But I just want to be clear about that because I think, you know, as we deliberated this, but, you know, at the end, I didn't know that, you know, I could make my own surmise about where I thought people might be, you know, coming from, but their comments were relevant. And so I make that as a pretty affirmative statement because to me, folks that come down here, I don't want to be discouraged because some people are going to disappoint us, some people are going to be pleased by the decision we make here. But you're always welcome. These chambers belong to the people of Sacramento County. And whatever the item is, whether it's in your immediate neighborhood or somewhere else in this county, you're welcome to join us any given day that we're in session and make your comments. And you don't have to tell us why you're here. You can tell us what you think about what we're deliberating and how you think we ought to make the decision. So that being said, I intend to support Supervisor Peters' motion. I think one other thing that needs to be included in these considerations, though, is that, and I'm glad that there was, you know, some forethought on behalf of the applicant, that they felt that the paraphernalia and some of the other additives that people, you know, they're illegal to sell, illegal to have, but they use it for illicit activities, that judgment was made. And I think that as a part of the consideration, and maybe it's prohibition under the ABC license, but as we have this national discussion about vaping and vaping products, and, you know, who gets -- whose hands they get into, I think underage use of products that are legal for adults to use continues to be a concern of mine. I think it's a concern probably shared by everybody at this diocese and probably everybody in this audience. And I think we need to be not only good business owners, but good elected officials and certainly good citizens in our considerations about how much access we have. And this goes to the discussion here today about convenience and public necessity. And I'll tell you that in all my years on the board, I've not supported any of these because there was a public necessity. Convenience can be debated, and it was brought up here today, but in my view, that's a misnomer, that there's no necessity for access. That certainly is a business practice, and for beverages that are legal for purchase by adults, you can have plenty of convenience, more or less. And I appreciate the comments around that today, but I intend to support Supervisor Peters' motion. But I want to make it really clear, you're all welcome to come back at any time to weigh in on matters for this board. Thanks.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So I, too, intend to support the motion, but like Supervisor Natoli, I'll preface it with, this one is also a closer call for me. And if nothing else, it's a closer call because this property, this business, lies very close to the intersection of three supervisory districts, those shared by Supervisor Frost, Supervisor Peters, and myself. And so for that kind of geographic reason, I took a kind of closer look and scrutinized this a little bit closer than I would otherwise. And for those of you that have not testified either in opposition or support to a PCN in the past, you should know that there's, you know, it's no secret, there's an awful lot of deference that's given to the supervisor in whose district the PCN is being considered. And I think this is no different. I think we're taking into consideration Ms. Peters' reasoning for her support for it. I'm taking that into account as well. I will say that I think in addition to schools, as Supervisor Natoli has, I think rightly suggested, so that we understand the juxtaposition of school sites relative to where PCNs are being sought, and as was evidenced in some of our discussions this afternoon, I think in the future, if there's any vacant properties within a certain radius, we should know what the zoning is of those properties. That should be alluded to, explained in the board letter, so that we are consistent in understanding what the future might hold for some of those vacant properties relative to alcohol sales. I think that's important to know. And then finally, I want to go up a little higher in altitude and just mention that, you know, in the briefing with staff, as was alluded to earlier, I, like my colleagues, were kind of given a very general, quote-unquote, environmental justice rationale to do something that's unusual. Because we don't really deny too many PCNs around here, quite frankly. We kind of have a system where the sheriff's comments and suggested restrictions are welcome, and, you know, we don't rubber-stamp them necessarily, but we always have a healthy discussion about them. But this one is a little different because there is this quote-unquote environmental justice rationale that was kind of generically presented to us. And I don't know that that's necessarily helpful. I take environmental justice extremely seriously, but I know it in the context of, for instance, air quality, water quality, making sure that we have equal access to public amenities. And it's not a term for me that I want to use lightly, or nor do I want to have it used lightly by our staff when it comes to something obviously as important as this, where you've got 100 people that are willing to show up in an afternoon to give us a piece of their mind. So what I would suggest is that if we're going to go down the road and use environmental justice as a means of determining the merit of future PCNs, just like so many other things we do in the land use realm of decision-making at the county, we need something to kind of gauge that against, right? So I know we have the environmental justice element of the general plan that we're continuing to work on. We have, I believe we have drafts of that that we can consider now, but I think we're going to need more than just kind of the, you know, kind of the throwaway comment of, well, it's environmental justice. Well, I don't know what that means relative to something like this unless I have it in context. That's what I'm asking for. So I would suggest that if we're going to do that, whether it's the environmental justice element or some other policy that we develop, that you develop before the board, I think that would be helpful, and I think it could be very appropriate. I think there's a lot to be said for how and why we locate certain uses in certain parts of Sacramento County. And it's important to know, is it a community of color? Is it a community that's economically disenfranchised? In addition to, is it a community that's oversaturated or a community with high crime rates? So I don't want to leave you, staff, believing that. I don't want to entertain that in the future. I just think we need to do it the right way.
Okay, thank you. And I will say that there's nothing that's been said up here that I don't agree with. I do want to point out, though, and emphasize what Supervisor Natoli said, and that I can't say it nearly as eloquently as he did, but with Mr. Hare, for example, I did not mean to cut you off when you wanted to speak later. It's just that, to me, it's irrelevant if a person owns a business across the street, next door, or whatever. We consider the totality of the circumstances and the impacts on neighborhoods, so that had no relevance in my decision-making process. With that, any other members of the board have any questions or comments? We do have a motion by Supervisor Peters and a second by Supervisor Frost, and please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you all for coming today.
Thank you very much for being here. As soon as it quiets, we will proceed to nominations.
Okay. Nominations, item 49.
Let's get it quiet for a minute. If you could quietly exit the building, we actually have more business to conduct. Thank you.
Okay, nominations.
Nominations, item 49. You are continuing to October 8th Sacramento County Youth Commission, to November 5th the Casumnas Area Community Planning Advisory Council, Delta Citizens Municipal Advisory Council, Elk Grove Casumnas Cemetery District, Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Committee, Local Child Care Planning and Development Council, Maternal-Child and Adolescent Health Advisory Board, North Highlands Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, and the Vineyard Area Community Planning Advisory Council. Children's Coalition?
Continue to October 8th.
Natoma's Community Planning Advisory Council, Mr. Serna.
We are recommending nominating Jill Zito, Deborah Baines, and John Casillas, and continue the remainder to October 8th, please.
Sacramento County Mental Health Board, Mr. Natoli.
October 22nd. Continue, please.
Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commission, Mr. Natoli.
October 8th, please.
And then we have South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council, Mr. Serna.
For District 1, please. Continue to November 5th.
And Mr. Kennedy.
Continue to November 5th.
And that concludes your nominations.
Thank you. Number 50. Ken Executive.
No comments.
No comments. Members of the board, Mr. Natoli?
No.
Mr. Serna?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. And before I comment, let me just say, that was some of the most masterful chairmanship I've ever seen on these chambers. No, seriously, job well done. I think you really handled that very well, and it was very efficient use of everyone's time. Yeah, I just wanted to make mention the fact that, as it's noted in our receiving file, I was, had the opportunity to be in Washington, D.C. for most of last week, joined by Bruce Wagstaff, Chief Deputy for County White Services, and Michelle Kaya with Children, Family, and Adult Services. We were joined by representatives from LA County, City and County of San Francisco. We were also there with representatives from service providers from the state of Florida, Deputy Commissioner and their lobbyists from New York City, and certainly Hall and Knight representing us were there as well. That whole contingent was there for two very intense days of Capitol Hill visits, both with legislators and key committee staff. The effort was aimed at finding some relief at the fact that seven of the 58 counties in California, and I believe the entire state of Florida and some New York counties, as well as some other states that were not present during the visit, are facing this challenge with transition from the Title 40 waiver, which will cease at the end of this month, to the implementation of the Family First Prevention Services Act. And I think, as this board is well aware, what we're looking for is both time and appropriations to kind of soften that transitional challenge. By the third meeting of the first day that we were there to meet with the folks on the Hill, we were pleased to be presented with a proposal by some key staff people with the House Ways and Means Committee. The mechanics of that proposal, I'll let Mr. Wagstaff speak to, but just want to say, you know, I've done this a number of times. I know others on this board have done it on different subject matter, whether it be flood control, or the tunnels, or other aspects of county governance and service delivery. It was undoubtedly, for me, the most productive couple of days I've ever spent in Washington, D.C. That's saying a lot right now. Seriously, it was good to feel some partnership with not just our legislative contingent in Congress, but others as well, key committee representatives, that I think finally understood the magnitude of what this transition poses for counties that have had enjoyed great success with the waiver for several years, including Sacramento County. So with that, I'd invite Mr. Wagstaff to offer any other comments.
Well, thank you, Supervisor. Members of the board, I'd have to agree, it was a very productive trip. I think it's one of the most productive I've ever had to D.C. I think it was very helpful that we were joined by those other jurisdictions that you mentioned. Our lobbyists, working with the lobbyists from the other jurisdictions, organized a very effective use of our time. In two days, I think we had about 20 meetings, going back and forth between the various buildings, as you've all done when you've been back there. And I was pleased because we've been working this issue for a number of months, if not years, and frankly hadn't received a very good response. The people from LA talk about doors being slammed in their faces and that sort of thing. So to have received this proposal was very reassuring and a very positive thing. Basically, for the purposes of the board, what we got is the fact that in, you know, the waiver expires in a couple weeks into this month. So what they've committed to is that in 2020, fiscal year 2020, we would receive 90% of the waiver amount, and in 2021, 75%. So clearly not perfect, but a heck of a lot better than we thought we were going to get. Allows us to continue with our efforts. Michelle's people are right now very actively looking at this with Brits to see what we can still claim the Title 40 and all that sort of thing. But we are very pleased with this, if not surprised, and very pleased. Thank you Supervisor Kennedy for signing a letter of support, which we told the folks back there we would do. We expect to see language, the actual legislative language, probably tomorrow. But we received numerous commitments that it's going to reflect what we saw last week. This, just one last final comment. This is what they call a four corners bill with deference to NAV. That's not the North Carolina offense I'm referring to. Meaning that you have the majority and the minority leadership of Ways and Means and Senate Finance.
Bipartisan, bicameral.
Supporting and sponsoring this legislation. And they committed to find a vehicle to make it work, different vehicles we heard talked about while we were back there. But to say the least, we are very pleased with what happened. It was a trip very much worth making, and we're in a much better place with this proposal.
I would be remiss, too, if I didn't publicly thank our representatives, Congresswoman Doris Matsui, Congressman John Garamendi, Congressman Almi Beara for the direct assistance on this.
All I was going to say is that Bruce is the only person in the world that can put that in a positive. Four corners typically is a pejorative, but we'll go with that.
Ms. Frost? Ms. Peters? Okay, just a couple of things. One is, first, I was going to say thank you to our colleague, Mr. Serna, for making those efforts back in Washington, D.C. Thank you, Bruce, and all your staff as well. As I have said before, there's not a lot more important than that issue for this year, and we ended up in a lot better place than we thought we were going to be. So thank you, Phil, for your efforts. Couple things also, OIG update. We have received, as of two days ago anyway, with the potential for more, eight applications as a result of the search firm, which is a better place than we were at last time, which was one. So the closing is October 1st, so that process will continue and be dealt with very quickly. So we're in a good place there. The second thing is, I would like staff to look at, and this isn't obviously a hot burner, has to happen, you know, soon, but I'd like to look at, the San Francisco airport has recently banned plastic use within the airport. I'd like to, it doesn't have to be obviously an agendized item, but a report back to all board members, because, and I said, this may take some time, because I'd like a thorough analysis of what San Francisco did and what it would look like if we were to do something similar. And that would be the fiscal impacts, what exactly it would entail, all of that. Okay. Okay. Anything else? All right.
Good job, Beth.
Thank you very much, everybody. It was more challenging than we had anticipated, so we're adjourned.